Five thirty P M. It is Tuesday, February fourth. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Hyzer.
Here.
Rizzo. Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, we have six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have three registered to speak. First up, Moses Leos.
Good evening, council and mayor and council. I'm Moses Leos and I'm a Kyle resident here, two six eight Western Drive. And today I'm here to speak about the upcoming executive session item one B pertaining to the property at one ten by around one ten Western Drive. And I want to begin by just kind of stating this, just because you can doesn't always mean that you should. When it comes to making big decisions in life, I feel like this idiom should have larger meaning. For example, I definitely have the power to buy a 100 inch television for the upcoming Super Bowl. But just because I can doesn't mean I should, mostly because I could end up being broke at the end of the month and possibly sleeping on the couch for my bad decision. Which brings me all to the proposed vibe trail, a grandiose project the city says will improve connectivity across town and draw additional tourism. But what worries me and so many of my fellow neighbors is the feeling that Kyle might be trading convenience for safety, specifically when it comes to the spring branch portion of this particular project. Currently, this part of the trail is slated to be constructed in areas that have been designated as drain adjizments. And part of that includes an area behind my home, which sits well within the 100 year flood plain, is roughly 100 feet away from a small creek, and is where part of the trail is supposed to go. My neighbors and my family have seen firsthand how treacherous the rapidly running rainwater runoff can be in this drainage adjustment following a major storm. This is but one of a few major issues that our Silverado neighbors have harbored about this project. Golf cart traffic, potential golf cart traffic, environmental worries, noise pollution, all valid issues. But it feels like time and again, the city continues to want to pursue their current course of action. And quite frankly, in my opinion, and maybe in my personal impression, it just feels like the city is maintaining this idea that this trail is going to be built come hell or high water. I hope it doesn't come to that. I urge you all to pause on this land acquisition and implore you upon putting this trail and to hold and implore you to hold on putting this trail where it's currently proposed to go. And I also call upon you to maybe realize that not everything in this town needs to be paved. Because when the high water arrives, and it will in our area, I cannot for the life of me think that our city could be putting anyone in danger, especially those out of towners who might be wanting to visit this proposed trail. God forbid we experience a tragedy taking place. No one wants that. Of course, no one wants that. But I really do have to ask, is the city prepared to explain to people, sorry, is the city prepared to explain to its citizenry how people might have lost their lives walking on a trail they knew was placed in a dangerous area? Just because you can build a trail on this property does not mean you should.
Thank you, Moses. All right, next up is Terrell Hensley. Or Terry, sorry.
Thank you, council. With what Moses had said, I've had in my backyard, I've had to rescue three people out of the water that that was back there. Not only that, but we're also were advised that should a golf cart, you know, a kid playing on one of those mini bikes or whatever, if we get hit, if our if our gate or our fence line gets hit, we're responsible for it. Well, why should I pay for something that I didn't vote on, that I didn't want? And it's what the answer was given to me was use your homeowners association. Well, I don't want to pay out of my homeowners association, and I shouldn't have to. If this is going on to be built, then, you know, somebody should take responsibility and own the responsibility. And not only that, but the price of what is being what's it's being bought for is so, I don't know, I don't want to say cheap, but so unreasonable as far as what they're planning on what they propose that you're going to buy it for. And we had asked if we could, since now that it's up for sale, why weren't the residents allowed to purchase that area of their backyard? And cut it up into, you know, and then we'd have to maintain, you know, cut it up into property lots, and we would have to maintain it, keep it cut. I do anyway, I already cut my back, you know. So, and not to mention, what's back there is unbelievable, the wildlife, the deer. I've had a bull in my backyard, I've had a cow in my backyard, I've had chicks, deer, you know, two of her babies. So many people do enjoy that area out there. You know, we don't mind the kids riding their bikes, you know, because they just run right, go right through the path or but at the same time, a lot of them get stuck. And if we didn't hear help, help, I don't know what would happen to those kids. We had a parent that pulled up and she was like, oh, my God, oh, my God, do you know where my daughter is? I said, no, we've got her. No, we've we've saved her. Because she was looking for her dog. And so that and that, that's all I guess I can say at this point. I could go on, but, you know, we're just trying to prove a point here of things that go on in case you guys didn't, you know, know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Raquel Salinas.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm a homeowner in the Silverado neighborhood as well. My house is one of the houses that will be directly impacted by the vibe trail that is being proposed. The vibe trail is slated to be built on a piece of land that is designated as a special flood hazard area, zone eight, as you all know, and it's been designated this by FEMA. The land is on the 100 year flood plain, as Moses mentioned. When it rains, we have had to, like Terry said, save people that have been stuck out there in the mud. And we've seen lots of other things, you know, kids kayaking out there when the water rises and other things like that. So the water, the runoff already comes pretty near to our fence line. It's already at our fence line. And I've lived in this neighborhood for over 20 years, and the runoff from the rain is getting closer and closer to our homes due to all the neighborhoods that are being constructed. And there is less soil and vegetation for saturation, therefore more water accumulation, as we all know that happens. Building a 12 foot concrete trail by our homes will only worsen the situation and increase the chances of our homes becoming flooded. The safety of our neighbors is being jeopardized for a recreational pathway. There's a reason why FEMA has regulations around building on a 100 year flood plain and why Centix also had restrictions on this particular piece of land, although I saw that they are suddenly removing these restrictions after being assured that nothing would be built on this land when we bought our home. If anything, the flood plain has gotten worse, like I said, with the removal of all the soil and vegetation around our area. Now there's other concerns as well. The other concerns include increased traffic, which is already a problem in Silverado. And we've had to actually call the police and we've had, we've been told to call the police because of these incidents with traffic. But also increased vagrancy, which we've actually found homeless encampments out there in the past, and disruption to the wildlife that currently lives there. Some of the wildlife living there are actually federally protected birds. There are regulations protecting these birds as well. So please take into consideration how this will negatively impact the residents of Silverado. I encourage you to look at the layout of the land so you can see for yourselves how building a trail on drainage or detention easements will cause significant problems and place our neighbors in harm's way. This issue has been ongoing for several years, and our HOA board had previously voted no to sell this land and suddenly voted to sell it without the input of any of the homeowners that are directly affected by this. So my question to you all is who will be assuming responsibility when the new construction of the vibe trail causes more flooding and damage to our homes? Thank you so much for your attention to this matter. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Those are all the forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is executive session. The city council will now go into executive session to discuss agenda items one, A through G pursuant to Texas government code sections five fifty one point oh seven one, five fifty one point oh seven two, and five fifty one point oh eight seven. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh two P M. It is Tuesday, February fourth, and I'm going to call this regularly, actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to bring this call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There'll be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh three P M. It's Tuesday, February fourth. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Hyzer. Rizzo. Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, five members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting, special meeting on January twenty first and including the regular minutes for January twenty first, 2025, as written.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, second by Councilwoman Harris. So we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries five to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have several folks who are registered to speak. First up is Ellen Ermas.
I'm going to, let her go first if that's all right.
Okay.
We're tag teaming.
Betty Conley, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm here in response for CAS, and every year we do a achievement and accomplishment that CAS has done throughout the year. So we just wanted to let city council know what we have done for the seniors in the city of Kyle for 2024. We have, we're bringing back music to the old opera Kyle house that we call the Opera House, and we got a grant with the Tohono country dances. They had a $4,000 grant to bring bands back into Kyle, and so we started those back into the CAS. In January, we hosted MLK celebration, and we did crafting scars for a cause to keep warm and distribute out to the community. We hosted the Subaru Operation Warm, where they distributed over 250 pairs of shoes, socks, and coats. In February, we sponsored the Kyle Chamber Area Fire and Gala. We did Black History Month with the Peace and Harmony quote displayed at CAS and around the community. We celebrated our 18th birthday last year. In March, we decorated over 1,000 eggs for the special needs with the Easter egg hunt here for the city of Kyle. In April, we sponsored a senior resource fair community and paired up with the Hayes County Latinos United, providing a vaccine clinic at the Kyle Library. We sponsored a booth at the Chamber of Commerce City Business Expo. We helped make 600 patches stars for a troop program that we give out to the veterans and send all over. We also did sewing for a cause for the pillow piece with Unforgettable Families. The quilters of CAS made over 500 pillowcases to go with those pillows this year that were handed out. We hosted a Mother's Day pancake breakfast in silent auction. We hosted and participated in Cece's Closet, which was sponsored with also with Unforgettable Family and Friends. We hosted the second annual Juneteenth flag raising ceremony and celebration with partnerships in the Kyle Public Library, Unforgettable Families, New Sigma Sigma, and Kiwanis. We did a summer heat preparaness fan drive where we collected over 100 fans. We also purchased five portable air conditioning units for those in Kyle that needed air conditioning. We partnered with the Kiwanis, the Fire Department, and the Police Department for a school supply drive. We also established a free library that helps the kids learn and read, and it's at Lakeside Community and other subdivisions. We did a collection of donation for school supplies through various businesses in the community. Members also volunteered with the Hayes Care Shoes for Hope, where we did wore shoes again through the schools. Don Conley was nominated as a Kyle Chamber of Excellence Commerce Award for Volunteer of the Year, and CAS was nominated for Best Prophet of the Year. We hosted the second community remembrance ceremony for those that have lost loved ones. We began partnering with Lehman High School Community Service Projects, teaching crochet classes to make mats for the homeless. Now turn that over to you. Because that's yours.
All right, Ellen Ermas, please state your name.
I'll just continue quickly where she is. We won first place in the Founder's Day Parade for our float. We hosted the annual quilt show. We brought 70 pillows to domestic violence victims. We participated in the Sinner Street Trick or Treat. We hosted Feast Around the World, Dia de las Muertas, a Thanksgiving dinner with over 200 people served. We contributed $2,500 to the new Kyle radio station. Members volunteered throughout the community with the toy drive. Chamber, Hayes Latino United, we collected coats, and we participated in the Parenting Educational Program, H C I S D. We have a total of 102 members last year, so our membership is up to 1,400. Our general volunteer hours is 6,550, and our city desk, front hall, front desk here is 12 different people volunteering 1,400 hours. There's also a sheet with colors on it that shows our growth. And those were our month to month activities. We also have at the very beginning, all of our weekly and monthly activities, fitness programs, crafts and music, social wellness, health and wellness, and community involvement are all different categories. We have a motto, bridging generations because we care. So we do a lot, not just for old people, but for students, families. We appreciate the new building so much. We look forward to continuing our work, growing to fill that facility with community effort. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the building.
All right, next up is Catherine Rivera.
Good evening, council. I am a resident here in Kyle, Texas, but I'm here tonight representing the Homeless Coalition of Hayes County as the agency I work for. Senacore is a participating member. I'm here to discuss or share with you the poverty simulation training that we have coming up later this month. In 2024, 37.9 million Americans and over 11.4 million of them, children under the age of 18, live in poverty every day. This data was last updated in September. Many more people have incomes that are above the poverty line, but their incomes are still low enough to qualify them for programs like SNAP and Medicaid. It can often be difficult for those of us who are able to provide our basic necessities with our families without having any private or governmental assistance to truly understand the situations that families, that many of which are neighbors for us, are living in poverty through every day, the decisions that they make, and the fears and frustrations that they often feel in faiths. This is why the Homeless Coalition of Hayes County is reaching out and inviting you to participate in the poverty simulation training that is being sponsored by the Wimberly United Methodist Church and hosted by the coalition. The poverty simulation was originally developed by the Missouri Community Action Network and allows participants to assume the role of a family member of someone in a low income family and what they have to live on with their limited budgets. This experience is divided up into 15 minute increments during the day, each of which represents one week out of a month that a family must be provided for and maintain their home and daily activities. One participant was quoted saying, "This poverty simulation demonstrated to me how much time and energy many families have to give just in order to survive day to day. It quickly dispels the myth that people would do fine if only they would get a better job or a job at all." The simulation that I'm here to promote is being held on Thursday, February 27th, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and will be held at the Hayes County Elections Building because they have this space, something of this caliber needs. It's located at 120 Stagecoach Trail in San Marcos. It does require prior signup in order to properly prepare for and set up for the participants. And in order for it to be the most useful, at least it can take up to 88 participants, not including those of us that are going to represent resources as part of the simulation. They aren't unable to accommodate walk-ins because of the prep needed. I did provide the secretary flyer, so for anyone here interested, I have that. And we're just encouraging our leadership in all our cities and anyone in your networks that would be interested to reach out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next up is Wilma.
Javie.
Okay. Javie. I thought it was an S, but it didn't look quite right.
My name is Wilma Javie, and I'm a citizen of Kyle. I attended the January 21st, 2025 council meeting virtually, and I learned at that time that during a discussion of consent agenda number 12, that in 2023, the council resolved to place the peace and progress programs under its control. I did hear Mayor Mitchell's explanation for the resolution, but it seemed that the resolution was an extreme reaction to an issue that with an easy fix, simply don't appoint current office seekers as moderators or panelists. This resolution, I believe, greatly limited the involvement of Kyle's African American community in the African American History Month's Peace and Progress Program, since there are none on council and there are none on any of the commissions of the board of that are of which I'm aware. I agree with council that the 2025 program should educate the entire Kyle community about and celebrate the impact of African Americans, not only on labor's history and culture, but also on the important role that African Americans have played in America. During the discussion, it was stated that in the future, the process for selecting moderators would be more inclusive. However, I don't understand why council did not rectify the insensitivity of that resolution at the January 21st meeting by rescinding it. Further, even under the constraints of that resolution, council could have placed a member of the African American community who is knowledgeable about the subject matter to co moderate with the city official, yet council did not do so. No amount of study compares to a lived experience. I also did not see a discussion to rescind the resolution on tonight's agenda. Every culture's peace and progress program should be planned with members of that culture and at the very least co moderated by a member of the culture being celebrated. The panel should be representative of Kyle's diverse population. We all learned from hearing about the American experience's impact on minority cultures and the important role that these cultures have played in Americans' history. I believe that in the past, these programs were vehicles for fostering appreciation and acceptance of our different cultures. We should go back to that. Thank you for this opportunity to come out.
Thank you. All right, next up is Lauren Foy.
Good afternoon. I just want to thank Kyle, the city, for recognizing February as a spay and neuter awareness month. I'm Lauren. I am the president of PALS, Pet Preventative Liter of Central Texas. We are the only low cost and free spay and neuter clinic here in all of Hayes County. Last year, we spayed and neutered over 6,351 animals in this county. 1,000 four, 1,090 of them were actually from Kyle addresses. We are super excited to partner more with you guys as we accept your vouchers now. We can't wait to expand those services. We're in the process of buying a new facility that we're going to be able to do more wellness and more spay and neuter, and we just look forward to working with you guys in 2025 in a bigger and better capacity. And just want to appreciate the fact that y'all recognize that this month is a spay and neuter wellness and that you guys have been a good partnership in that with us in PALS. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Greg Estes.
So I'm just, I'm here to talk about the tree on Stagecoach. I know I was pretty disappointed in the way that it was voted on beforehand to basically cut the tree down. I was starting to get involved in 2015 with Mayor Todd Mitchell, or Todd Webster, I guess, Todd Mitchell, yeah, Todd Webster. And he came up to me and asked me, and he goes, hey, what do you think about the tree? And I said, hey, it's been been here. I like the tree. Let's try to do something. Then circumstances happened, and then y'all voted again, stall it, stall it, and then finally y'all voted to cut it down. I recently looked at engineering plans on it, and I've been a server for 25 years, and I've noticed that, wow, you can actually go into the property, take some right away, come back inside, and actually go in there without taking much right away. And it's, I mean, I don't know, I guess my question is, I really hope y'all, we all would look at what y'all did in 2019 with the taxpayer money that y'all used to look to go to go to that plan, and y'all voted to basically cut it down when you had a plan that you could have gone around the tree. And I just wanted to say that, what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Tracy Sheal.
Mayor, council, my name is Tracy Sheal, and I am a resident of the city of Kyle. Item 20 is in regards to the ride chair program, and you guys are going to be looking to have a report on the effectiveness and efficiency of ride chair. And I understand and appreciate that. But I do want to do a shout out for Uber 314. It was a godsend for me last year. If it had not have been for Uber 314, I would not have been able to get to my PT appointments twice a week, my doctor's appointments, go get food or anything. I was homebound without a vehicle. I couldn't drive even if I had wanted to. I think that's why my mom took my car. But when it came to Uber 314, all I had to do was get on an app, and within 10, 15 minutes tops, I had somebody at my doorstep to take me to my appointment. In other cities like Austin, where they have carts and everything, those patients and residents have to actually call and make an appointment for somebody to come pick them up a couple of days in advance. And usually that appointment is an hour to two before, you know, before their actual doctors or whatever appointment. or whatever appointment. And then they have to go around to the, you know, other people pick up and get dropped off. And then after their appointment, they have to wait another, sometimes hour, two hours to get picked up. Not with Uber 314. It was right there for me, and the drivers were wonderful. So I really want to do a shout-out for my former council members who were on the dais with me, who voted for it, but also for former council member Rick Coach and former Assistant City Manager Jerry Hendricks for the work that they put into the Uber 314 program. It really is a godsend for people who are homebound due to transportation issues. It's also a safety proponent. I know several friends who use 314. If they're going to go out and have a few drinks at night, it's a lot safer than driving home later, possibly with a DUI or DWI. So while efficiency and effectiveness are wonderful, just take into account what it also provides. And with that, I'll say thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Dakota Norton.
I think that I shall never see a poem lovely as a tree. A tree whose hungry mouth is pressed against the earth's sweet-flowing breast, a tree that looks at God all day and lifts her leafy arms to pray, a tree that may in summer wear a nest of robins in her hair, upon whose bosom snow has lain, who intimately lives in rain. Poems are made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree.
All right, thank you. Next up is Vanessa Westbrook. Ms. Westbrook, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Good evening. I would like to start off by thanking Mayor Mitchell and Councilmember Zuniga for attending the event on January 26. It was a Sunday evening, and we had 22 young people who gave an absolutely flawless program to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. The students came from the three high schools here in our area. 10 of them, I'm sorry, 12 of them were actually high school seniors, all getting ready to head off to college, and over half of them with full-ride scholarships. This is what the young people did. Wished we would have had more of a crowd, but we had enough that the students felt welcome and appreciated. And I do thank both of you for coming to just give them that little extra push. They appreciate it also. And it's February, Black History Month in the United States. Here's a simple explanation of Black History Month. In 1976, Gerald Ford extended a recognition for the United States to be able to recognize Black History Month. It was actually started in 1926 by Professor Woodson Carter G., his name. He was known as the father of black history. Black history recognized pivotal roles African-Americans have played in the history of America, their achievements, their excellence. The month-long event is designed to educate everyone. Remember, textbooks don't tell the whole story. They never have. And keep in mind that African-Americans were the one group of people that actually had a law to prevent them from reading and writing. Therefore, any documentation of anything they did was left to the slave owner, the oppressor, the government for years. I'm going to stop here, but I invite you to pursue this more. Educate yourself and celebrate. And let me share a bit of education with you. I always take the opportunity to be able to educate everybody I can as an educator back in the day. So did you know that Kathy Williams, who was born somewhere between 1842 and 1844, we're not quite sure, she died in 1983? But she was the only documented African-American woman to serve as a soldier in the Civil War. She described herself, she actually set up so that she looked like a man, and actually that's quite easy to do, making big clothes and a hat and short hair. She was able to be in the U.S. Army, and she served in 38th Infantry Regiment as a Buffalo soldier. There were over 400 women who were documented in the Civil War. However, she was the first African-American. I'll leave you with Albert Taylor. He's local. He had a store right on Front Street. He lived from 1885 to 1918, a local guy, African-American. He was a tailor, and he had a tailor shop right up the street. So I leave that with you. Find out more. A lot has been contributed to all that we are and all that we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Westbrook. That is all the forms that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who has a citizen comments form? Yeah.
Can I get you again?
Sure.
All right, good evening, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. I stand here today to ask the city to-
Can you state your name since-
Oh, yes. My name is Yvonne Flores Kale. And I'm here today to ask the city and the council to please reconsider leaving the tree where it's currently at on Stagecoach. With the engineering plans that I've obtained from the city and reviewed, I know there can be a way to both keep the tree and widen the road. And why would you guys do that? Because it's what thousands of residents want. And so I hope that you guys, moving forward, take into consideration, not us versus them, not what you want versus what the residents want, but together, what can we do to appease each other? I'd like to see the tree stay where it's at, and then the plans to go around to the west where Six Creeks, I believe it is, the detention pond is, and it can be widened that way. In the event that council has any questions about that, there are plans that I've received from the city, which I'd be more than willing to share with you. Also, Agenda Item Number 12 regarding Silverado and the purchase of almost 10 acres and the amount of $100,000 is quite concerning for me. I don't live in Silverado, and nor do I support overspending, but I will say, when it comes to the residents, I think there was a bit of a discrepancy in the amount that the city has offered them. I also would urge you to understand the process that went through during the meeting for their HOA. The HOA board muted the residents that were trying to speak and speak up against the fact that they did not want to purchase or they did not want to sell that land, and they certainly didn't want to sell it for $100,000. So I hope both of those are taken into considerations tonight. Well, not the tree, because that's not on the agenda, but at least, how long do I have? Okay, at least just the Silverado. Also, Agenda Item 20 with the Uber program. I think it's been really great up until now, but we've become a full-grown adult city, and I think we need to have transportation for people who may not have a phone, who may not have a checking account, privileged people who might not have the opportunity to get to a computer to order an Uber. Those are really nice. I think avoiding a DUI is also great. And my opinion is that is if you can go out and drink, you can definitely pay for your own Uber. With that said, I would like to see transportation where you can get from east to west without paying $7 essentially for a ride back and forth for a high school student that is going to work four hours a day. That's probably half their paycheck. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have a citizen comments form? Mr. Castaneda, did I not call you? Did I miss you? I know I saw your name. I apologize. If there's someone else that I missed, we have quite a few this, please step forward.
Mayor and City Council, thanks, Domingo Castilla. And with me is Nelly Barrera. As members of the Lions Club, we're here to undertake another project. We call it Hoodie's Drive, and Nelly's going to describe what it entails.
So the Kyle Lions Club is a small entity, but we're like the little engine that could. And we just finished a project, and really the city of Kyle really helped us there. We found out that the young girls that are in a specific program at the high school called PEP, Pregnancy Expecting and Parenting, they run out of diapers during the holidays. So we just decided, in our infinite wisdom, to raise some diapers and donate them to that club, and we got almost 7,000 diapers donated. So now we're on to another little project, and it's the hoodie project. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Amber, Mayor Pro Tem Bear, Ms. Laura Lee, Council Lady Laura Lee, and Mr. Bryan for helping me through the process of getting a yes. And the yes is that we called to see if we could put a box here at City Hall. So we have a box there, and we're collecting hoodies, any size, slightly used or new, whatever. And those hoodies are going to go to the clothes closet, and the clothes closet will distribute them to the kids. But I think that program, you don't just go and pick up something, you have to either fold or put up shoes or something, so it's like a little work for them. And thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a citizen comments form? All right, seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is Agenda Order. Does anybody have any items they wish to move around on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. I'm going to, if it's okay with you all, we'll do the proclamations next and then the appointment. I think that's probably a better flow. So we'll skip to Item 4, Proclamation Recognizing Dating Violence Awareness Month. Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you. Whereas one in three adolescents is a victim of physical, sexual, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, and whereas the effects of dating violence impact youth in all communities and cuts across economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers, and whereas respectful, supportive, and nonviolent relationships are key to safety, health, and academic success, and whereas by providing teens and young adults with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas family, friends, teachers, coaches, faith leaders, community members, and other important people in young people's lives have the power to influence youth in positive ways, and whereas last year Hayes County Women's Center provided 61 Dating Violence Prevention and Healthy Relationship Presentations to 2,430 teens and young adults. And whereas last year Hayes County Women's Center reached an audience of more than 790,000 through Prevention Education Toolkit downloads, and whereas we must work together to raise awareness and promote healthy dating relationships with activities and conversations about mutually respectful and nonviolent relationships in our homes, schools, and communities. Now, therefore, I, Laura Lee Harris, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Council Member District 4 of Kyle, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month for teens and young adults, and do hereby call upon the citizens of Kyle to work together to raise awareness and prevent dating violence in our community and beyond.
All right, thank you for that.
I want to present. I believe we have some representatives of Hayes County Women's Center. If you'll come up, we'll present this, and anyone that would like to join us.
Grab a quick photo too, if that's all right, if everyone gets together. We can get a little bit more scooched in, maybe some layering. All right. Yeah, I'm cutting some of your off. All right. Okay, so one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you all. Good cheer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Is there anything they wish to add on that item?
All right, seeing none, we're going to move to Agenda Item 5 is a proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Councilwoman Tobias.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, very honored to bring this once again. Black History Month is celebrated every February in the United States. It stands as a strong reminder of the rich legacy, cultural contributions, and historical struggles of African-Americans. Black history provides the opportunity to highlight inclusive education that captures the contributions, struggles, and experiences of African-Americans throughout our United States history. When it comes to Black History Month, understanding its origins and the importance of it is very critical, particularly in the current light of the political challenges on the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that aim to unrecognize our diverse identities. In most recent years, Black History Month, the need for it still has become increasingly evident in the face of systematic racism and the ongoing struggle for civil rights. However, Black History Month serves as a source of pride for African-Americans by honoring their heritage and their history. African-Americans can strengthen bonds in communities and celebrate resilience and overcome many challenges with understanding and compassion for all. It is time for celebration, education, and dialogue surrounding the contributions of our, of the African-Americans. And again, Black history is part of Americans' history, and let us embrace it. So that, Mayor. I will read the proclamation. Whereas after starting as an idea for ways to celebrate African-American achievements nine years earlier in 1924, a celebration that eventually renamed Negro Achievement Week begun, and the outreach was significant, but the desire for greater impact also persisted. We are going back to the beautiful history, and it is going to inspire us for greater achievement. By February 1926, this statement of historian Dr. Carter Woodson, along with the idea that he had prominent African-American figures who had become Negro History Week. Dr. Woodson chose February for reasons containing that was already familiar to many. Since 1865, black communities have celebrated fallen President Abraham Lincoln's birthday, and then by the late 1890s, former slave and prominent abolish activist Frederick Douglass' birthday, both occurring in February. This showed his true effort to extend the study of black history, not to create a new tradition. Finally, in 1976, this celebration was expanded to include the entire month of February, and today, Black History Month garnered support throughout the country as people of all ethnic and social backgrounds discuss the African-American experience. Whereas the city of Kyle takes pride in its African-American heritage, this can also be seen in Kyle with its entire scale of history for the enslaved people and its founding to the courageous freedmen who have settled in the area, and from the early traders representing business in Kyle and those who have served and represented the growing community in various capacities, including publicly elected offices like former council members Matty Welch, Ray Bryant, Dex Allison, and former Mayor James Atkins. And whereas the city of Kyle encourages the preservation of our African-American history and applauds the efforts of groups such as Hayes County Historical Commission, as well as local individuals- as well as local individuals in helping restore, preserve, and maintain Kyle's historic location, such as the African-American Cemetery, the Kyle Family Pioneer Cemetery, which has received a state historical marker. And the city joins in the unified endeavor of its community members around Hayes County in paying homage to those that have helped carry on the resolute efforts in a continued remainder of the achievements and sacrifices by African-Americans, men and women, who have contributed to the achievements of human civilization. And whereas, this year's theme, African-Americans and Labor, places a particular focus on the role of African-Americans in the labor movements. Over the years, black workers have fought for better wages, job security, and working conditions. The contributions of African-Americans, whether in industry, or later in the civil rights movements, business, education, and politics, have positively laid the foundation for much of our country's growth. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the city of Kyle that February 1st through March 1st, 2025, should be celebrated as Black History Month in appreciation of the many achievements of Kyle's African-American community and those across its nation and its history. On that. And on that note there, like I said, it's an honor to recognize our residents during this month. And I know we've had some comments earlier about the dialogue, peace and progress dialogue. My take on that, and looking at this, I think we need to really respect that and also look on how we can really take a new look at this. And moving forward, I think that we should understand where a lot of the residents are coming from. And I think us as a council can move forward from this. And, but, on another note, again, it's, I'm very honored to be able to bring this forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any comments on this particular item?
I just want to say, thank you for bringing this resolution forward, proclamation forward. It's a great proclamation, Councilor Tobias, you all do a great job on it. And just keep in mind that the theme this year for African-American Month is African-Americans and Labor, the invisible contribution. So, it's something that we, we talk about education, and what we should, you know, really be focusing it's on the contributions. And it's not just in the labor forces, we think about what they were doing. It was also poetry, you know, the performing arts, every piece of music that the contribution that African-Americans have made in our, in our country. There's something we need to bring awareness to and make sure that we're, you know, making sure we're educating people. And that's how we move forward as a country. We're educating, we've got no room for, you know, diversity. We don't have any room for hate. I mean, so, it's all about love and moving forward. So, I'm really excited that you brought this proclamation forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Do you want to do a photo, or picture, or anything like that?
If anybody would like to do, come up to the front, we can do a quick photo.
All right.
All right. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Six, a proclamation recognizing spay and neuter awareness month. Councilor Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, before I read the proclamation, I'm going to go ahead and just give a few words about the significance and why it's important for us to think about spay and neuter awareness month. And then I'll ask a few members after I read the proclamation to say a few words. Spay and Neuter Awareness Month is important for our communities and for our counties because it really is a comprehensive strategy effort to try to work on reducing homeless dogs and cats, which occur from overbreeding. And it's a way to try to focus on access resources to communities that probably have financial barriers, and trying to get low-cost veterinary services so that people can take better care of their pets, cats and dogs, and ultimately, for those dogs to not end up in shelters, but have a better quality of life for the duration that they have with their pet owners. So, that's why it's important to think about the awareness part so that we can prevent overpopulation, which puts a lot of pressure on shelters, shelter staff, and even the volunteers. And so, it's a big, comprehensive way of looking at one part of it. The other part of it is on fostering and providing low-cost care to try to do what we can to, you know, raise awareness that it's an important issue that you may think it doesn't affect you, but it does. When you see a dog that may have been run over, or a cat, that's something that was preventable if we focused more on spay and neuter and those kinds of remedies. So, that's why it's important, from what I was reading. And I'd like to read the proclamation. The city council proclamation, whereas in 2024, 450,000 dogs and cats were killed in our nation's shelters just because they didn't have a safe place to call home. And whereas, 568,325,000 companion animals entered Texas animal shelters, and 82,681 were killed in animal shelters across Texas. And whereas, spay and neuter initiatives reduce incidence of homeless animals, certain life-threatening diseases, and even can curb negative behavior. And whereas, the regional animal shelter reported an intake of 3,849 dogs and cats in fiscal year 2024. And whereas, the ultimate goal is to ensure that every shelter has the resources and the programs they need to save every dog and cat who can be saved. And whereas, 80% of pet owners consider their pets to be family members, you know, their support for families. And according to the American Veterinary Medical Association, and whereas, the city council, in support of the best practice adoption centers, endorses responsible pet ownership and encourages the community to fix their pets, to curb the number of pets which become homeless, stray, or enter the regional animal shelter. And whereas, spay and neuter of pets and trap-neuter vaccinate return of unknown community cats are integral components of the best practice equation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Kyle that the month of February 2025 be recognized as Spay-Neuter Awareness Month. And with that, I'd like to ask Sheri Boyet and Brianna, if you'd like to say a few words, too. Just give us some information. I know that cat season's coming up, and there's going to be some free and affordable cat clinics hosted by pals on February 9th.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, everyone in attendance. My name is Sheri Boyet. I'm the Hayes County Animal Advisor for the Judge and the Commissioners Court, and I'm a supporter of Prevent a Litter. I wanted to add to some of the reasons why this is an important proclamation. The animals that are spayed and neutered, whether they be pets in your home or community cats, have a much greater chance to live longer. And so, those of us who are, who adore our dogs and cats, just be it known that there are studies that show, let's see, 18% longer for male dogs, 23% for female dogs. And for male cats, it's high as 62% longer, and female cats, 39% longer. So, that is a really important reason to fix your pets. Now, I've been screaming and yelling, "So, fix your pets" for a long time, 20 years. And that's enough reason just to do this proclamation, but there's more to it. It's a cost savings. Right now, there's 174 dogs in our regional shelter. There are 93 cages. I'm sure that everyone here who's working on the animal shelter for Kyle can appreciate those numbers. We want to work with the county. We've been meeting, I'm on the Pet Resource Center County Project with Austin Pets Alive, and we've been meeting with your officers. We just met with Brianna last week. Embarrassing. I think she's, we were talking earlier about, we want to get the word out about how Kyle has a voucher program. If you're a city of Kyle resident and you need assistance to get your community cats fixed, or you want to volunteer to be part of that program, please reach out to the Kyle officers in the Police Department with the Animal Control. And I just want to remind everyone that the county is working very hard to do our project, and we hope to work with Kyle for efficiencies in government and to do a better job for our animals across the county. Please go and adopt a dog or cat. San Marcos Shelter needs volunteers and adopters. Thank you.
Brianna, if you'd like to come up? If not, then we can take a photo afterward.
Just kind of reiterating what Sheri said. We do have vouchers available for our residents, and that's available on the website. And any participation in trap-neuter release is much appreciated, letting us identify where those cats are and getting them, getting them fixed. And we're, we're talking with pals all the time, every day.
One of the things I didn't say that I thought Brianna would say is that it's a healthier community when you fix your pets, because they get vaccinated at the same time. So, I don't think anybody would agree, would not agree that that's not a good goal.
Does anybody have anything they want to add on the topic before we take a photo? All right, let's do it.
Okay, just a little bit tighter. You guys can all stay, thank you so much. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Did you give me?
Yep.
Okay.
Same time.
All right.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Three, Consider Approval of a Resolution to Appoint George Calafit, or Calafit, to Seat Five of the Planning and Zoning Commission for an unexpired term expiring September of this year. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa McCollum, Chief Development Officer. I have the privilege of bringing, hopefully, a new Commissioner for consideration this evening for you. We have a vacancy, and George signed up to fulfill a hopeful position on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think he'll be a great candidate for this term. He will actually fill an unexpired term, so his term limit will come through September of this year. And then, he would look to reapply with the normal application cycle. This appointment panel met on January 27th and did recommend George to be the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. So, with that, you as the council have the ability to approve or not approve and with the considering of this applicant. And George is here, too, as our...
Calafit or Calafit?
The second one.
Calafit, okay. Like Caliphate, but not quite. All right. Thank you for that. Does anybody have any comments about the nomination? I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor, second by Councilor Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations. Good luck. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. I'm assuming we're going to want to pull the item on the vibe trail.
Item 12.
Item 12. So, we're going to go and pull that. We'll let staff do a full presentation. Is there any other items that y'all would like to pull?
13.
Seven, Mayor.
Gotcha. Any other items?
Which one is the vibe trail?
12. That one's pulled.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Nine, Ten, Eleven, 14, and 15.
Item Eight.
Eight's pulled by Zuniga. That was correct. He got it right.
They pulled it.
Sorry. Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Rizzo, second by Councilman Harris, that we approve Agenda Items Nine, Ten, Eleven, 14, and 15. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item Seven, Consider Approval of an Ordinance to Amend the Speed Limit on I-35 Frontage Road in the city limits of Kyle. Councilor Tobias.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barbara. I looked at the map that's showing from the existing road. This is, I guess, this is the service road. So, is there going to be, is there any other changes that we're going to need to make along there? Or is it just within this area? Because I see that they did a study that sound that 85 percentile speed was 58 miles per hour in that area, which I seriously doubt. It's more like 78 miles an hour, the way that people drive around here. I'm just wondering to know if there's going to be any other changes that we think, sir, that we're going to probably need versus on the next, next coming months within the year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Councilmember, one of the questions I had for the text out was how often do you run these studies? And typically, they don't run these very often unless we ask them for a special situation. Maybe something's been built there that's adding a lot of traffic to that roadway. So, on any of these state roads, we can request they do studies on those roads. I was notified they had done this study. The person that I talked to wanted to refresh and clarify the speed limits along the southbound Frontage Road and the northbound Frontage Road. He went all the way from Yarrington to Hillside Terrace. So, part of the study was in Butte, and part of the study was in Kyle. This section of roadway here is right there between 1626 and, if you go about 1,100, 1,200 feet north of Beebe, that section, according to their records, is posted at 45 miles an hour. I did look through there. There is one sign that says 45 miles an hour, which really surprised me because I've seen that, that particular section of roadway. I was thinking more like 60, not 78, but I know they do fly through there. So, right now, the northbound Frontage Road will be 55 all the way through the city. I don't expect they'll be doing any more studies on that in a good while, unless something drastic changes there.
Okay.
Now, just, just for you to note, the southbound is 55 up to Marketplace Avenue. From Marketplace Avenue, southbound to the city limits, it's 50 miles an hour. If Councilroom members in Mobility Committee that we had a number of years ago, they had a choice to make whether to keep it at 55 or 50. They chose to keep it at 50. So, Textod has agreed to keep that at 50. So, that's, none of the other speed limits were changed, except for this one that's there between 1626 and just north of Beebe Road.
Okay, yeah, because I know when people make that, this is the southbound, right? Or is it northbound?
Northbound, yes, sir.
Northbound, yeah. When the people cross the bridge and they start heading towards the highway, they're already going excess of 70 miles an hour already, and then it just hits right there. So, I just didn't know if there's any other spots along our city limits that we're, we're going to need to go ahead and change, that we can go ahead and do it within the, you know, within the next month or so. But, I mean, if we got to increase it because of the speed, then it's a lot of it's because of the traffic flow. So, with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve Agenda Item Seven.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney, that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven. All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney, that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven. Is there discussion on that motion?
Yeah, just a reminder, anytime that we're thinking about moving speeds, uh, speed study has to be done. If it's a Tech dot road, then we need Tech dot involved, so that way we know that we, the citizens know that we're not just changing speed limits. There's a process that happens in order to do that, so just wanted to bring that forward.
All right. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Barbara. Appreciate it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number Eight. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Weaver and Tidwell LLP in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to conduct a risk assessment and analysis of the city's critical organizational processes. Uh, Councilmember Zinga, you pulled the item. You have the floor.
Yes, Rosie, go ahead and, uh, go through it, because I was trying to understand why, what, what this is about.
Sure. Uh, Rosie, Director of Administrative Services. Um, this item allows us to consider approval of a resolution, uh, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Weaver and Tidwell to conduct a risk assessment and analysis of our organization. Uh, so the City of Kyle is requesting, uh, that Weaver and Tidwell work with us to perform a risk-based assessment. Uh, this assessment will focus on identifying, analyzing, and evaluating the city's exposure to inherent risks in our key operational and business processes. Uh, we will accordingly receive recommendations to address and mitigate those risks. The goal of this study is to enhance our risk management strategies and, and ensure resilience of our operations. We will help to, this, this study will help us to understand, uh, the City of Kyle's structure, functions, and activities, uh, to identify risks. Uh, they will identify and rank high-risk activities by process area and groups, and provide risk map, or risk maps and rankings to assess probability and impact, and concluding with recommending mitigation steps and delivering a final report, uh, with management feedback. So it's, it's fundamentally bringing in a consultant that will help us to analyze our operations and identify areas that we want to look at internally, uh, to ensure that we're mitigating risk that comes with those operations.
Just to, um, add a few more, uh, words on that, it's really the, the foundation for creating what we would call an internal audit program here. And what we need to do is to look at all of our processes and operations across the organization, and then we will rank those based on the risks that are, uh, present in those operations. And then we'll look at bringing in individual, uh, audits and, uh, process reviews on each one of those to improve them. So things that we'll be looking at is, uh, cash handling, overtime controls, payroll processing, AP, uh, vendor setup, things like that, that go all throughout the organization, and trying to, uh, prioritize and then, and then make sure we, uh, develop improvements for each one of those.
So, so it's necessary for budget audits?
It, it's an internal audit, uh, component, so it allows us to, uh, make sure we strengthen all of our processes and internal controls across the organization, but in a, in a managed way.
So why do we need an outside consultant to come and review that? Why can't, like, we take that in-house and make recommendations to departments of what's a risky endeavor, what is not a risky endeavor?
Yeah, so one of the things that we do is we certainly do that already, uh, but what we want to have is a formal, formally-developed program that, that can allow, uh...
No, go ahead. Sorry.
We want to have a formal, uh, program that will be developed, and that's something that will then work in concert with our audit firm, so that they'll understand the prioritization that we have for the internal audit program.
Right. Is this for the admin side of the building? This isn't for...
It's for, uh, it's for all processes that we have in any part of the organization. So any kind of, uh, process that goes through, uh, the organization.
Would that include computer?
Right. It'll look at, uh, all those kinds of things as well, any kind of, uh, IT-related processes, control points that we have. Those are things that are looked at from an external audit when we bring those in, but in a limited way. They look at it up until a level of what they call materiality. This allows us to do a deeper dive and look at that in more, more detail.
So, when they're...
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
So when they're looking at those, they're looking at what our current processes are and evaluating whether those are adequate.
Right.
And saying what might be improved and how to improve it.
Right, so this would be to help us identify which of those processes are the, have the highest risk in the areas that we think have the most potential for improvement, and then to put together a plan for those that we would address. Yes, ma'am.
So no internal, this has not been done before, only the external part, which I'm aware that we do it for the budget season. There's always...
Well, you're required, uh, by law to have an external financial audit, which we do, and we get a clean opinion on that. But this is to take that additional step to do even more work on the internal control side of our operations.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, I like that you provided more examples, because I just was not understanding enough of it in the slides. And I almost said, there's not enough information to, to decide on this at all. So, thank you.
Glad I could help.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eight.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember Zinga, second by Mayor Protem, that we approve Agenda Item Eight. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Moving along. Uh, next up, Agenda Item Twelve. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase property located adjacent to one-ten Western Cove, uh, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Lopez, just take it from the top. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. David Lopez, Director of Parks and Recreation. All right, so brief overview of this project is just some site information, project history, land offer, and options for your consideration. Site information, uh, this is located at, in the Silverado HOA community. Um, this is what we call the Spring Branch Connector for the Vibe Trail. Total acres for the property in question is seven point three acres. About half of the property is in the floodplain, half is outside. The purpose of this, again, is for, uh, Vibe Trail connection piece. Project history in spring of twenty nineteen, the city was awarded a grant from TPWD, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Uh, it was a trails grant for two hundred thousand dollars for construction or hard costs for this project. In December of twenty twenty-one, uh, we have Schaumburg and Polk, the design consulting firm, had completed ninety percent, this overall design of this project, which means it includes surveys, topographical trees, uh, and then the, all the engineering associated with this, site grading, drainage plans. In winter twenty twenty-three, um, the design was completed for the project. And so it's almost two miles for this connection piece. And a bit, bit of land history, uh, in early twenty twenty-four, Silverado HOA expressed some interest in selling the property, and, uh, there was a, uh, desire to remove some deed restrictions on the property. In January twenty twenty-five, the HOA board voted to sell the property to the city. So, um, we wanted to also talk about the walk shed impacts for acquiring this piece of property. Trust of Public Land has a ten-minute walk metric that, uh, measures how close residents of a community live, uh, close to a park. So, uh, if you're within a ten-minute walk, you're within about half a mile. In acquiring this property, we just wanted to demonstrate that it increased the City of Kyle's overall walk shed from seventy-three point two percent to seventy-five point four percent. And on the land offer, the purchase offer was one hundred thousand dollars. Again, uh, seven acres, half in the floodplain, half out. The trail design accommodates for drainage patterns. That means it's no adverse impact. It's, it's neutral or slightly improved. The, uh, cost per acre was, uh, a little over, almost fourteen thousand dollars. On the D details, the original developer, Syn-tax Home, is going to remove deed restrictions for this property. So I guess deed restrictions was for strict HOA usage, um, and this would make the trail accessible to all by removing those restrictions. So the, uh, options before you this evening are to approve the resolution for, uh, execution of documents or to deny the resolution. And I will take any questions at this time.
Councilwoman Harris.
I'm concerned about the engineering on this property. I, I think this would be a good, uh, vibe trail, but I really am concerned about the engineering. This property does flood, uh, seriously, and even into the backyards of some of the residents. Um, the flow is such that kids have had to be rescued from the mud and the water. I would like, I don't have any objections to us purchasing the property, but I would really like to have, uh, some additional engineering done so that the residents can be as assured as possible that we are improving the flood issues rather than making them worse.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. And we can look at what's, within limits of construction, and if there are concerns, um, that are beyond limits of construction, uh, as we approach the hundred percent plan set and bring that back to offer consideration, we can also bring, uh, a suggested, uh, survey and design impact for additional engineering needed.
I think that would be a great idea. Uh, I've visited that property. Spent about an hour and a half out there walking and talking to the residents about what happens when it gets a heavy rain. And it's a very strange piece of property, you know, with the big berm that our utilities easement is in. A flood, um, a flood zone, uh, flow by the fences that comes from Brooks Crossing, and then the creek that floods dramatically. I saw the videos of that. It is dramatic, um, when it rains heavily. Other than that, it tends to be a dry creek. It's ephemeral. So I think having some additional looks at that and being very careful about, well, where, where are we really going to put the vibe trail? That was a big question. Well, we've got some lands here. We've got the berm here. We've got some land here, but none of it looked quite, quite right for the trail. So I think some additional engineering would be great, but I don't have objections to, uh, purchase of the property.
Understood. Thank you.
And does anybody else have any questions, comments? Councilmember Zinga.
Dr. Harris, you said it's a dry creek. Is that, is, is it a dry creek?
Yes.
So there's...
It's ephemeral, which means that when it rains, it turns into...
So it only collects water for periods of time?
Yeah.
It's time to move through.
Because that was my question, was how would somebody walk a trail through, I guess, the water if it's, if it's deep, I guess?
Well, it would be on, the trail would be on the side of the creek, not over it, but...
But I guess there's a strip down at the bottom. You're proposing all of that to be the trail area down?
Yes, if there were any, um, let's say the sheeting of water that caused siltation, it's standard practice for Parks and Recreation to remove any silt that might collect on the trail, just for safety.
And we would mark it if the trail is unsafe, or if there's water over it.
Mark or close. Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions, motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item Number Twelve.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilwoman Harris, second by Mayor Protem, that we approve Agenda Item Twelve. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, say about something that was brought to my attention. Uh, there was a question about, um, safety on the trail, and, uh, the residents, that they had a concern about maybe people on the trail. Uh, I think they were worried about, you know, something, you know, bad happening, or people that they didn't want on the trail coming through there. But actually, I just wanted to put people's minds at ease that, you know, when you have a trail that's lit and you have a trail that is traffic, it, there's less, uh, crime on those trails. And the reason why is the majority of our, uh, crime that we're getting in our wooded spaces are places that people don't really go. If you go to the back of Water Leaf, and if you go to the areas that don't have a trail, you can see people messing with the trees. They're cutting stuff. They're starting fires. There's all kinds of hazards that are happening. You see litter. You see drinking, uh, a little bit of everything in those areas. If you come up behind St. Anthony's, the wooded area there, uh, same thing's happening there. We've had to, uh, get some young people out of there because of bad things that are going on there as well. It's when you don't have that visibility or people going by, there's that, you create an element where, you know, something could happen. This place being very sheltered and closed, you know, it's not always a good thing, uh, because that does institute crime and, uh, bad things going on in there. So, uh, having a trail through there, it would just be a plus. The other thing I think about connectivity through there to Wallace Middle School, you know, seeing the kids. I'd love to see more improvements on one-fifty for the kids to pass by, but this is an improvement in itself to allow kids, and maybe we cut down traffic, where kids could walk over to Wallace and, uh, make it more accessible. So just wanted to put my thoughts there.
I think that's a very good point, and I think that will pan out to be true. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Um, I was reminded, even though it wasn't, uh, notice is first reading, Agenda Item Seven on the speed limit was the first reading. Is, uh, that's, uh, on the Frontage Road. Are there any objections to that item being finally passed? All right, seeing none, that item is finally passed. Now we'll go to Agenda Item, uh, thirteen. Consider approval of Amendment Number Two to Task Order Number Six to American Structure Point, Inc. for an additional design and coordination for the Beebe Road West project of the twenty-twenty-two Road Bond Program in the amount of ninety thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents, for a total amount of one point seven two eight five nine six, uh, million dollars for, uh, Task Order Number Six. Mr. Zinga, this, you have the floor.
Thank you, Rosie. Uh, I think it's pretty short. You can just go through it.
Uh, sure. This is one of our twenty-twenty-two Road Bond projects, uh, as approved in November of twenty twenty-two. Uh, this project will realign the sharp curves of Beebe Road between I-35 and east of Republic Drive. Design is for an additional eight hundred and eighty-two feet of sixteen-inch water line, including connections to existing and proposed water lines. The previous council, council action for this item, the pre-bond preliminary engineering combined east and west package, uh, was in May of two thousand twenty-two. Schematic design was approved in March of twenty twenty-three. Uh, environmental services and the cultural resources survey were, uh, considered in November of twenty twenty-three. Alignment was approved by council in January of twenty twenty-four, uh, PS and E in March of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the retaining wall design was in September of twenty twenty-four. For American Structure Point, they've been contracted for each, uh, task order for Button Creek Road. Uh, March seventh of twenty twenty-four, council approved Task Order Number Six. And September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, council approved, uh, Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Six. Uh, total design costs, excluding Amendment Two to Task Order Six, is, uh, one million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and three cents. Uh, including Amendment Number Two to Task Order Number Six is one million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents. And we have lots of staff here that can answer any, uh, technical questions you may have on this particular one.
So I guess what I'm getting at is the amendment to this task order, is it essentially to install this eight hundred feet of a sixteen-inch water line? Is that, that's all we're getting?
That is correct. That is my understanding.
So, was the water line not planned previously? I mean, why is this an amendment? Because I'm thinking if we're doing so much utility coordinate, ARWA coordination, like, why, why are we looking at an amendment? Like, why wasn't this looked at in the initial schematics? I mean, does it have to do to service?
I'm going to need some help from some of our water and, and technical staff, uh, but I, I think this was the, there's a lot of activity for development. This is the Caraway Track that's in that area. It's also got a large multifamily project there. So some of this is making sure we have the right infrastructure to serve all the uses that are going to be there. And, uh, might need, uh, Mr. Murphy, or Mr. Clatt, or Trimble, any of those folks to help me with some of the technical details on that. But that's, that's the reason for the change. It's a large corridor that's going to have a lot of new uses.
And, and keep in mind that when we were going through the planning of this road, uh, the Caraway Track hadn't sold yet, so we didn't know what the use was going to be. So when we went to design before, we started designing just before the bond, and then after the bond, we, uh, later on found out about the Caraway Track. So a lot of the stuff that you see now coming in is not because, uh, we didn't plan for it. We just didn't know to plan for it.
I mean, I remember we had the discussion about New Quest, and I think we needed to have a bigger-sized water line. Is this, is this that relationship in there?
Uh, there's another project related to that as well, but this, um, the New Quest project was approved, if my memory is correct, at the end of twenty-three. And so, uh, Mr. Rizzo is correct. That was not a project that was contemplated at the time that the original, uh, Road Bond project went forward. But this is just part of the, uh, the work we're doing to loop the system, make sure we have good water pressure and all the lines that are needed. There's another project also for New Quest. I think it's called the Daisy Line Project, and, uh, Mr. Murphy might have to help me with that. But that's, there's many, uh, water line projects.
So, I guess, like, why would Structure Point be using Cobb Finley? Like, why aren't we directly just using a direct contractor in this project?
Well, this is for the design, correct?
Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, so I was having a hard time understanding why there's two, two, there's a subcontractor that's taking the majority of this draw.
Yeah, so, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, Mike Trimble, uh, Director of Transportation. So Cobb Finley, um, on this project, and we've used him on, on several projects in this program, uh, have utilities coordination and water expertise, and so they're used in that capacity. So, uh, on this, uh, project, they're being used in that capacity to do that work. So typically on projects like this, you'll have, um, subconsultants that will have specific expertise, um, whether it's utility coordination... whether it's utility coordination, whether it's a right-of-way, any other types of expertise. So Cobb Finley in this case is being used for that expertise.
Okay. And I guess my other question for you, Brian, is now we're going to talk about the reclaimed water. I noticed that in the backup here, reclaimed lines are being removed from the, from the initial designs. Is that a project that is being de-emphasized?
I can't tell you. I can't speak to that on this particular one. I don't know the details on the reclaimed lines.
I'm not aware of any reclamation lines being removed from this, but I'll follow up on that and see if there's, but I'm not aware of any of that.
Some of the, the cost is to remove reclaimed, or not to install the reclaimed lines. I don't know if there are reclaimed lines there, but it's saying that there's work being done to remove them from the.
Well, this is a brand-new road.
Right. Well, I don't know what I, what I read there, but it said, it mentions the reclaimed lines.
Where?
In the backup here.
I'm sorry, I just don't know what you're referring to.
So I guess we can just get back to that.
If you could, yeah, let me know what you're looking at. I'm not aware of anything.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that, but I'm not aware.
What I read was removal, what I would, what I was reading, it said removal of reclaimed lines.
Yeah, I'm not aware of us removing anything reclaimed water lines from the project. If we need to move something or relocate something, I mean, that's, you know, typical course of business in projects like this, but I'll check on that and make sure.
Okay. And I guess the other thing is, sorry, it's more than one question. There's a lot of PEC changes to utilities that it seems like we end up having to go back and redraw. Is that a continuing theme that we will be seeing on these roads? It says PEC redraws. Is that part of the contract?
I'd like to address that.
The 60% of the, of the redraws are PEC utilities, or utilities that we didn't work out.
Yeah. So in, in the coordination, you know, you'll get as-built, you know, alignments of the utilities, and sometimes you have to go back and basically true that up as you get further into design, right? So you'll have a certain alignment. Let's say at 30%, you have a certain alignment, but you do additional work. And then you coordinate with those utilities, whether it's water utilities, electric utilities, and then you get better information, and then maybe something a little bit off, and so you might need to revise the alignment, and there might be some redraws included. Typically, it shouldn't be extensive. It's just more of a truing up process. That's kind of how design works, as you go from schematic all the way to 100%. But typically, you have that worked out, particularly if you're getting into 90%. But one of the things, as I'm coming in, that I'm working with our GEC to do, is to standardize our coordination processes with our utilities, and so we are working to minimize those.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I mean, I know that there's really nothing out there yet, so it seems like we could just lay the pipe, but I guess most of the cost is in the, the designs of the, the water lines out there.
Yeah, and you got to get the designs right, and then you can go out and do the work. And so, yeah, it's a, there's a cost to it, yeah, for sure.
If I may add, Mr. Mayor.
Those were my questions.
Yeah. I guess what we may add, Zuniga, is this is area that, especially east of Kyle, that we've always talked about, that has no infrastructure, right? No water lines, no power lines, nothing. It's just all farmland from back then. So when we're talking about installing water lines at the last, let's say, not at the last minute, because we're, there's development that's going to eventually start coming in here. So we're going to need to lay down, I always use the term, water hoses here, water hoses there, and it's going to change the scope of the design, because you never know what kind of roadblock you might run across, okay? As they're digging through and they're doing the design, you might find a small little spring that we might need to look into, or there's a alleyway or right-of-way, and it's going to change. It's going to move it more to the left, more to the right. The same debate we're having over here on Stagecoach with this tree, you know, why don't you just move it this way versus that way? You know, the county could have taken care of this big problem 40 years ago. So these are things that we've, we're going to run across as we are starting to develop our city, especially east of Kyle, because there's nothing out there. So we might run into these, I would say, change orders, or realignments, or readjustments, and correct me if I'm wrong, as we're developing out in these areas, we're needing to bring the infrastructure, such as water, gas lines, possibly electrical lines, and a lot of it's going to be buried underneath. We're going to run into some of those issues where you have old pipe that we're going to need to go around. So just keep that in mind. I guess that's how I'm looking at this whenever I see a lot of these changes, especially east of Kyle, because we don't have anything yet, but I'm sure there's, there's a big reason why the engineering has to change, is because we have to align it with different things. PEC's got to be involved, ARWA's going to be involved, and, you know, county and so forth. So I guess that's what I'm getting at.
No, that's absolutely correct, council member. As you move through design, you're doing additional analysis, you're coordinating with utilities, and you might find new features. One thing that's very common in central Texas is finding karst features. We have a lot of limestone. You find those little cavernous features underground. You've got to account for that. You've got to adjust your design for that. So there's a lot of features, topography as you get more geometrics, all that information. Yeah, you make adjustments along the way. So, you know, and that, that's just a part of getting these projects done.
Councilor Hazer?
Yeah. Councilmember Zuniga, I just did a Ctrl+F search for water in all three backup docs. I don't see a single reference to anything regarding reclaimed water. And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilor Hazer, second by Councilor Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item 13. Is there a discussion on that motion?
No, totally get what y'all are saying. I just, was, I thought that maybe it was there, and we forgot to, we needed to have a water line there somehow. So we're doing it much later, so with different costs. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, thank you. All right. Next up is Agenda Item 16. This is first and final reading. Consider approval of an ordinance of the City of, Council of the City of Kyle, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment rolls for improvement area number five of the Six Creeks Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in improvement area number five of the district, levying assessments against the property within improvement area number five, and establishing a lien on such property, et cetera. Ms. Libby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. Our firm serves as bond counsel to the city. My presentation is going to walk us through Agenda Items 16, 17, and 18, which is the Service and Assessment Plan for Six Creeks, and also bond issuance for improvement area number three, and bond issuance for improvement area number five. In conjunction with the approval of the Service and Assessment Plan and Levy of Assessments for Improvement Area Number Five, there is a public hearing requirement. So after I move through the presentation, we can pause and have that public hearing before you all take official action. So just by way of refresher, Six Creeks, the Public Improvement District at play right now was originally created by the city in 2017, then known as Blanco River Ranch Pid. First assessments within the district were levied in 2021 for Improvement Area Number One, and we're here today for Improvement Areas Number Three and Five. The first series of bonds for Improvement Area Number Three were initially issued in 2021 as well. In the city's development agreement with the developer, there's a value-to-lien requirement for the amount of bonds that can be outstanding as compared to the value of the land on the ground. Because of that value-to-lien requirement, only a portion of Improvement Area Number Three bonds were issued in 2021. We're back here today to issue the remainder of the bonds, because additional value, i.e. home construction, has occurred since that time, to where the value-to-lien within the district supports the issuance of the remainder bonds. For Improvement Area Three, those bonds were priced today by FMS Bonds, and the request for Improvement Area Number Three bonds before council tonight is going to be $5,771,000. This is just a little bit more of background. In 2023, assessments were levied and bonds were issued for Improvement Area Number Four, and those bonds closed in February of 2023. General overview of the boundaries itself, the pit in total is 858 acres. Improvement Area Number Three is 111.67 acres, and Improvement Area Number Five is 15.92 acres. This is just a lot of the background that I walked through with you all. No need to restate it, but happy to answer any questions that you all may have, either about the assessment levy, or the bond issuance process, or we can move to public hearing.
All right. This item does have a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to open up the public hearing now. All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Libby? Councilor Harris?
Quick question about levying the fees. Has, this project's been going on for a long time now. Has the amount of the levies per property or district changed any?
So the amounts that are levied by improvement area are determined based on the amount of projects, the authorized improvements that go into that improvement area. And so we were before council last meeting, I appeared virtually, Mark McLean, what Samco Capital Markets, did the presentation for both the preliminary service and assessment plan, and the preliminary limited offering memorandum for these bonds. And so for improvement area number five, those costs were determined at that prior meeting. The bonds for improvement area number five and corresponding assessment levy is $4,183,000. And so that's the amount of assessments that will be levied and available to reimburse developer for the portion of projects, for a portion of the public projects that are going into this one specific improvement area. But as the pit develops, we're levying assessments on each phase or each improvement area as it comes online. So improvement areas one through four, that assessments have already been levied on. We don't go back and re-levy to capture additional costs. It's just for new infrastructure as the project builds out.
So the answer, if I'm hearing that right, is that, yes, as we go into new development areas within that pit, that we reevaluate those costs, and the assessment fees could increase.
So it's not so much a reevaluate, yeah, it's not so much a reevaluation of costs, but an initial valuation of costs, because each area is looked at independently.
Yeah, but, so we, we didn't authorize an assessment fee for the whole Six Creeks area. We just do it area by area, and as different areas come on, those costs may be more, potentially, than the first area number one.
Potentially, the cost could be more, but the improved, it's not apples to apples, because the improvements are not the same.
Right.
Right?
I'm just, yeah. I'm just saying that wasn't set when Six Creeks started. It's, each parcel is updated.
Right. So there is, and I don't have, I don't have the exact amount with me right now, but when pids are created, a maximum amount of assessments is specified at the time of creation. As you levy through each improvement area, it's almost like voted authorization. So you have a maximum amount of assessments that can be levied over the, over the district, and then as each improvement area comes online, that amount is deducted. And so there is a ceiling or a cap on the overall amount of assessments that can be levied in any one district.
So it is set at the beginning?
A not-to-exceed amount.
Yeah.
Is set at the beginning. Costs associated with the improvements are determined as each area comes online.
But up to the maximum that's set at the beginning?
Right.
So that's what, 15 years or 10 years for that area? And when they draw, when they draw that project out for so long, does that create financial issues when you get toward the end of the pit?
Well, I'm not sure that it necessarily creates financial issues. I think in some ways, it may limit the amount of developer reimbursement, so that there's more developer money that goes into the project, because there's less available special assessments or revenues from the pit box.
So the developer would be at risk for that. Okay. Thank you. That helps a whole lot. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions? Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 16 as written.
All right. Motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Councilor Hazer, that we approve Agenda Item 16. Is there a discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is an item that was already presented on, but it's Agenda Item 17. Consider approval of an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Kyle, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, Six Creeks Public Improvement Area Number 3B Project, and approving and authorizing related documents. Do you have anything to add to this item?
So nothing to add, just a reminder that these bonds, as priced today, were priced at $5,771,000. So that, that's the amount of the authorization that we're requesting in the ordinance.
Brian, can we bring up the 17, 18, 19 together since we weren't presented, or do we have a public comment period for either one of them?
Read all of them, and then just consider them all at once?
Well, not 19, but it would be.
18?
The next one.
17, 18.
17, 18?
Well, we just did 16.
Yeah, 16's already approved.
Could do 18 and 19? Is that what you're asking, just to read it?
17 and 18.
Yep. Did you present on 18?
I, I, I did present on 18, and I can just remind council, for improvement area number five, the principal amount of those bonds is $4,183,000.
All right. If there are no objections, I'll bring 18 up as well. All right. Agenda Item 18, first and final reading. Consider approval of an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Kyle, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, Six Creeks Public Improvement Area Number Five Project, and approving and authorizing related agreements. So we can make a motion on 17 and 18. Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
Do we already have a motion on the table for 17? Or do you want to do it on 17 and 18?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 17 and 18 as written.
Okay.
Seconded by Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Hazer.
All right. Sorry, yeah, I messed it up. Agenda Items 17 and 18 has been motioned, a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hazer, that we approve 17 and 18. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Zuniga?
Yeah, just a quick question. Brian, since, I mean, the pids are, these, these keep increasing in different, different pids that are out here. Do we have any idea, like, on the, since they're in the, they're, they're in the ETJ, aren't they? Like, do they have to come to us for any LUEs as they keep building out? I mean, is that impacting this in any way?
I, I think that was already agreed to in the development agreement that was approved 2015, somewhere in that timeframe. It's been many years ago.
So it's not, we don't have to issue any new LUEs?
No. My understanding is we've already have those commitments, and we're honoring those commitments with these agreements.
Okay. That, that's what I wanted to ask, that they weren't just developing more and more and not coming to us for any more water.
No, sir. No, those are already been agreed to in the development agreements.
Okay.
That said, I think it is probably worth noting, to Councilor Harris's question, that I do think they're going to hit their ceiling of total allotted assessments that they can levy against before they reach the end, and so there might be an opportunity for a renegotiation at that point.
For the pit?
It's just not, for the pit.
For the pit, yeah. Yes, sir.
So there may be an ask in the future, which I'm looking forward to.
But that's for the infrastructure, not the, not the LUEs, if they need more of, right?
Right. I think what the mayor's referring to is the overall pit, amount of the pit. There was a specific amount that was included in the original development agreement, and they may be getting close over time to reaching that.
All right. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item 19. Consider approval of an agreement with Freeson Nichols, Inc., to provide consulting services to rewrite the City of Kyle's development code in the amount of $499,903.
RFPs?
That's what you get. I'll give you a guess as to what the budgeted amount for that was.
Director of Administrative Services, I'm not going to touch that one with a 10-foot pole, but I will talk about why we're here. On January 16th, council approved the new comprehensive plan for the City of Kyle. The plan is the foundation for how development will occur. Our existing development code, adopted in 2003, as amended, is outdated and doesn't reflect the design and fiscally-based foundation requirements of the new comprehensive plan. Development code requires a full rewrite to better fulfill the comp plan and avoid the patchwork amendments to the code that are currently in place. So we issued an RFQ for this particular project. It was advertised in June of 2024 through July 29th of 2024. We received two responses. City Staff Evaluation Panel was convened to review the proposals, and on September 30th. And on September 3rd, 2024, city council awarded the RFQ to Freez and Nichols. Freez and Nichols has a robust team. The principal in charge is Chance Sparks. He is here with us today should we have any questions for him and we appreciate him coming. The development, the, this will help us for developing, development code and engineering manual, unified development code and an engineering criteria, criteria manual. We will be using code diagnostics to operationalize our recent 2030 comp plan. Issue statements and recommendations for addressing it varying detail based on impact to code organization and content. This will be informed by city staff, officials, internal and external code users. And it will facilitate consensus building and accountability at the beginning and the conclusion of the effort. Our, our code development will be user friendly. We'll have a better chapter headers and section headers and cross referencing. It'll be defensible. It'll facilitate the city's development process and it will provide innovation solutions, innovative solutions and approaches. The code rewrite timeline, I'm sorry, the, the deliverables include looking at the code rewrite and engineering criteria manual. Drainage, environmental utilities, transportation and pavement. Our timeline right now is 18 months. Looking at the existing diagnostic of current regulations, analysis and drafts, full discussion drafts, public drafts, and then final drafts, adoption and publications. The specific unified development ordinance chapters that we'll be looking at are listed here. Chapters 41, 53, 54, 50, 32, 29, 17, 47 and 38, including our design, our Kyle design guidelines. The contract you have is ready for execution and so if you, the options you have before you are to approve the agreement as presented and negotiated by staff. In the amount of $499,903 or deny the approval of the execution of the agreement and staff recommends approval.
Rosie, can you talk a little bit about the process that you're going to go through? And I, I mean like design philosophies, not necessarily this day, this public hearing. I really mean more like how are you going to extract out the best, best uses, best practices for such a comprehensive rewrite? Number one, in such a way that when it comes back to us that council feels like that it's making a positive impact. And then, and then also just so that we can have some, a, a, a little bit of control along, along the way.
Absolutely. I'm going to invite either Mr.
Let's see for Chance.
Yeah, he wants to come up here.
Sure, sure. Chance Parks, Freez and Nichols, San Marcos, Texas. Understanding your question is basically how do you get to a product that you know you're going to be happy with?
Yeah, we've done, we've done like comprehensive plans and various big rewrites in the past and it, it's, it's a risk for, for the money we're investing for us to go really far down the road. And then find out that, oh, you're, you're wanting to do all these things that we've never heard about or that might draw criticism from the community and then we might find ourselves back to square one.
Sure, that's where I tend to emphasize the first step in the process. That's that diagnostic report. Because what that does is that's setting the framework for how we're going to draft code. Because writing development codes is a complicated process. It's time consuming and it's something we only like to write once. So we rely on that diagnostic report to set the direction for here's the path we're going to take. Here's key decision points, types of zoning you want to deploy, key design factors you want to bring into it. And you rely a lot on different people that work with your codes as well as public engagement. Engagement with you as city council and mayor, your commissions, things like that to get a good handle on one of those issues. How do you want to approach it? Because for any issue you encounter as a city in development regulations, there's probably a good dozen ways to approach it. So we have to identify what's the best fit. So we do that diagnostic report, we go through, we identify the issue, a summary of it, recommendation, recommended approach and action. That actually comes to you as, as the city council for direction to say, yes, proceed on this path. We also build in check-ins, things like that. The worst thing you can do in a code rewrite is drop a large document at the end of it and say, good luck with your reading. We like to have check-ins along the way so that way if there is something that's coming up, we could quickly adjust and realign to make sure that we're staying on that path that you want us to be on.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Chance? Councilor Harris.
There were some things that I didn't see necessarily stated in the presentation that I would like to know would you be looking at. One is lighting ordinances. Another is the possibility of including lead certification. And water conservation in our codes. I didn't see either one of those addressed other than landscaping. And I think that given our circumstances in energy and water, that those are important issues all, and lighting. Are all important issues for the health and wellbeing of the community that need to go in code.
Sure, and those are all items we are going to be addressing. We only go to a certain level of specificity in presentations and contract itself, but. I, I live here in central Texas too. I'm acutely aware of the water situation and our penchant for electricity not always working so well. The, so that's definitely something we're going to be addressing. I've also worked heavily in lighting ordinances. With multiple dark sky communities, things like that, space we're very comfortable in.
Thanks, ours needs to be updated. It was updated in 2016, but there were some things that were left out. So I literally appreciate some updates on those and lead and water conservation, I don't believe ran there anywhere.
Sure, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rizzo. Does anybody have any other questions before we kick off? So when is the next time that we hear from you?
Pending contract execution, we'll have a kickoff at, usually within about 30 days of contract execution. I'll be wanting to work with your staff here to find out when exactly do they want to engage you as the council along that path. We do want to talk to y'all in the diagnostic phase to get your direct feedback on your experiences as the elected official where the buck stops. On so many planning and zoning related matters. So that's where we, that's where we say we're engaging the council as a stakeholder. And we'll have a conversation with y'all about that. I'd expect that to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 60 days out from now, give or take.
Do you have any intentions of engaging with planning and zoning commission? Melissa, can you tell us about that, that process?
Absolutely. Our, our planning and zoning commission will be at the forefront of really kind of looking at this code, at being that they're. The body that reports to you on, on code amendments. I do think we're going to be engaging other boards and commissions. We're looking at parkland dedication ordinances with this, which would be something that we would engage with. The parks board and, and any other boards that kind of have their toes in the water of code. As you can see, it's really a comprehensive code rewrite, so it, it touches a lot of stakeholders, honestly, whether they're for various boards and commissions or. Or planning zoning commission, but they'll be at the forefront for that. So George came on right on time to hit the ground running with. The planning zoning commission of really kind of being the, the first, first review of stuff that comes before you, absolutely.
Yeah, I was, I just think that there might be, you see, obviously you know how many items we have to deal with and the breadth of, you know, just responsibilities that we have. This, this item deserves more merit than what we can give it. It deserves more attention than what we can give it from a regularly scheduled meeting. So I'm hoping that y'all can do some workshops, in particular with some of those boards and commissions to help get really comprehensive feedback from them. Because they are a part of our community and they're kind of engaged with our process and flow too, so they can be very valuable to us, I think.
I was also going to add, those community surveys that we've taken, making sure they get all that documentation so that way they can see what the residents have, you know, prioritized is important as well. So getting all that to them would be important.
All right, any further discussion? Motion? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 19.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo that we approve agenda item 19. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations and good luck. All right, next up is agenda item 20, consider approval of a resolution to award RFP 2024 DD 10. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract to hire the Goodman Corporation to conduct a review. And make recommendations to improve the City of Kyle's ride share program for an amount of $164,450. Ms. Truelove.
So as background, the Uber Kyle 314 program is a partnership with the Uber ride share platform to provide transportation options to all Kyle residents and visitors. Riders can take a trip to anywhere that begins and ends within Kyle city limits for the small price of $3.14. The Uber Kyle 314 program will subsidize rides for up to $10 per ride after you pay the first $3.14. Though riders will be responsible for anything over the initial 1314, the $3.14 payment and the $10 subsidy. Riders are issued one monthly voucher that is valid for 10 one-way trips through the city's mobile app. And the program also provides one round trip from Kyle to the Austin Veterans Administration on Metropolis Drive for $3.14. As well as two one-way trips to and from Austin Bergstrom International Airport per person per month for 31.4% of the ride cost. This program started in 2020 as one of the first full-service public transportation partnerships. The budget for the program has increased over the years as the ridership has increased and the contract with Uber Transit was amended to extend the partnership through September 30th, 2025. By council on August 20th of 2024. What we are finding now is that a comprehensive review of the program is necessary. The review will provide recommendations to enhance the efficiency, accessibility and sustainability of the program. While ensuring compliance with federal regulations and improving service delivery for, for residents. So the, the city conducted an RFP and designed a scope that shows deliverables of a program review and recommendations. We're asking the consultant to assess our Uber Kyle 314 ride share program and suggest improvements for efficiency and effectiveness. To look at operational enhancements, specifically identifying opportunities to enhance program functionality and overall operations. And to assess our connectivity to regional mobility. We're looking at community outreach and marketing, support efforts to increase public awareness and engagement with the program. And there's an element or consideration of future program management. And while this was not included in this scope, the city may issue future solicitation based on the findings that we may have. The project schedule for this is estimated to last nine to 12 months. Public outreach will be a heavy component of this particular effort. Includes, including analyzing digital and print campaign performance using metrics like website views, social media engagement, news coverage and polling results to refine strategies. We plan to leverage digital tools, grassroots efforts and community relationships to maximize the impact. And create digital and print materials that effectively convey the messages and foster support and present data in visually engaging formats. This will be heavy on the data and analytics side, looking at extensive industry expertise and partnerships. The, the selected consultant has extensive experience with Uber, Spare Labs, the routing company and Maruti with direct backend system integration and enhanced collaboration. Will have advanced transit analytics, utilizing a Power BI driven dashboard to track key metrics like ridership trends, spending, wait times and trip patterns. For data-driven decision-making. This will allow for some real-time monitoring and optimization of the program. Allowing us to continuously analyze transit data to ensure budget adherence and implement program improvements within 24 hours. And will also include the, the comprehensive program review that we've discussed. Auditing booking processes, technology platforms and call center operations while recommending and supporting program enhancements. We issued an RFP for this ride sharing partnership review on October 11th of 2024 and it closed on November 12th of 2024. Proposals were scored on experience and qualifications, program evaluation and operational improvements, pricing, community engagement and marketing. Technology and data analytics, and we did conduct interviews. The recommended contractor submitted the best evaluated responsive offer. A panel of city staff reviewed the three submissions that we received. We shortlisted two firms for interviews. And are recommending today that we award this RFP. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract to hire the Goodman Corporation to conduct this review and make recommendations for improvement of our, the City of Kyle's ride share program. So options to approve or deny the resolution and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Truelove. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Rizzo?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm looking forward to seeing us improve this program. It's a great program. It definitely has been affordable for a city when we're looking for affordability. This was something that really came out of Kyle. The original task force members for this was Rick Coach, Daphne Tenorio and Alex Villalobos, along with Jerry Hendricks. And I thought they did a great job when they brought this forward to the city, made presentations. And one of the beauties of this is that it's affordable. It's one of the most affordable things a city could do. And it's important because it runs 24/7. And we see a lot of entities create a type of bus system and those run Monday through Friday, eight to four. God forbid somebody gets sick on the weekend or in the evening because you, you're, you're not going to do anything. Our Uber program and Maruti program allow people to go to the hospital, doctors anytime and it comes to their door. They don't have to go to a bus stop or anything like that. A lot, I know a lot of people have talked about bus services, but bus service is outpriced the people that they're trying to serve. You're talking about millions and millions of dollars. So when you're trying to bring a bus service into your area, it is, it's unaffordable. If you go, and if you don't believe me, go talk to Manor, go talk to Cedar Park, talk to other entities that are, you know, trying to revamp what they're doing now. Because really important to know that dollars as well, you know, federal government gets so many dollars for a deal, but they give it to zones. And right now the zone, controlling interest in zone in, in our area is Capitol Metro, so they get to allocate the dollars where they want. So it's not like we can go and apply for federal dollars because those are already allocated to an entity. So it's, it's important to keep in mind that it's affordable and it works in real time and it helps people and it gives people. But I'd love to see this program expand to where we start thinking about our senior center moving out to allow seniors to, that who live on a fixed income. Give them a better price as well to make sure that, you know, for seniors, it's about being home and, and it's for mental health. It's about health in general because we don't want our seniors just stuck at home. We want to make sure that they come out, they interact and they have people. And they get to share time with people as well. So it's important to see us improve on this program. So I just wanted to say, I, I guess I get real passionate about this because this program started in Kyle. We're the first to have this program. And now other cities are taking notice and implementing this program. So really proud of what Kyle started here and the council members that started this. So it's pretty great. And with that, that's kind of what I'm going to say.
Additional comments? Councilor Tobias.
Wow, Robert, I was wondering if you could take a breath? Okay, the question that I have is if this contract goes through, how long will the contract last? Is it a year contract?
I would say approximately. We've talked to the consultant and we think that the, with this initial scope of work of doing the, the preliminary, I mean, the assessment of, and the program evaluation would be. Around a nine-month, approximately nine-month to 12-month project.
Okay, and the second question is how often would this company give us a briefing on the data that they received? During this time, will they, I mean, you said it's going to be a nine-month. Would there be something that they could brief us on? Like every two months or three months to see where we're at? Because I think we expanded on the contract for them, correct? And then we started getting into budgeting for this. We've got to be able to see the numbers of like, I hope they could be able to look to see. How many people are requesting to actually go to the airport? And yet at the same time, we're also hearing some residents saying, is there a way to where you can expand it out a little bit further like south? Like for Texas State University students that, that live in this area. I know there's a transit bus that comes and drops off students, but I think we only have a certain barrier within the City of Kyle. And also would they be able to look into other programs that they could use for residents to have for students? Okay, because I, one of the, one of the residents that I had spoke to, they use this program. And they use the 10 vouchers, but after 10 vouchers, they've got to pay the full price. That didn't help them when they have a student that stays after school for practice. They can only use it 10 times and that's it. Especially when their parents work late. So would they be able to look into that to see how we could be able to expand that kind of process there?
So I think those are all great examples of, of different ways that we could potentially look at enhancing the program. Or hearing from our community about what their priorities are and seeing how that could be synthesized into the program structure. So that will be part of the process, looking at, at different elements like that. We will provide, as we work with the Goodman group, we will develop that scope and the timeline. And we'll have some natural points where it will make sense for them to come back and brief council. And we'll make sure that you're aware of that and, and you guys are obviously a very natural stakeholder that will be part of that process when we engage. So I don't have a schedule that I would be able to say because this is authorizing us to negotiate that contract. It's awarding the RFP to the Goodman Corporation and then authorizing us to negotiate and execute that contract. So that will be an outcome of the, of the negotiated contract.
So, that will be an outcome of the negotiated contract.
Okay. Sounds good. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20.
Second. All right. Motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 20. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Harris.
A quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I would assume that they will consider multiple modes of providing this service. I ran a transportation service in Northeast County for seven cities, and we used small vans, and that included the senior centers. So, there may be some opportunity to do small van pickups for specialty things like the senior centers. And then, also, coordination with other cities. It's very difficult if somebody has to go into San Marcos for medical or legal purposes. The courts are there, and a lot of physicians are there and a hospital that many use. A lot of the social services that our people use are in San Marcos. Would really like to see an ability for us to collaborate with the other cities in Hayes County, especially to get people where they actually need to go rather than just in the city limits, especially since a lot of the other cities are beginning to adopt this rideshare, whether it's Uber or another.
I think that aspect of how we can connect to our regional mobility partners is critically important, and that's something that wasn't necessarily envisioned in 2020 when we adopted the program. And so, it's a natural way to see how we can broaden and strengthen what we're doing.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item Number 21.
Is there any objection to moving 24 up to before the staff residence?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We'll move 24 up if no one has any objections. Agenda Item 24, consider authorizing a fireworks display by the Buta Brightside Organization on February 7th, 2025. Councilwoman Kenny, go ahead.
I was approached by a resident, former CEO and director of Buta Brightside. It's a nonprofit organization that provides services for people with cognitive disabilities, and every year, they put on a Valentine's Day dance. They were offered by a professional fireworks company to put on a small fireworks display. And looking into what we would need to do to make that happen, we have to have a one-time approval by this council. So, just bringing it up, it is Night to Shine, I believe is the name of it. It is this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00. Christina, is it supposed to be at the end of the dance?
Yes, so it'll be a three- to four-minute display, if that even, and about at 8:30 because we'll be tired from booking by then.
Yeah. I would also like to mention that I talked with the fire department before I ever brought it to staff, and I was assured that there are no safety issues involved, that there's not a concern from their perspective.
Councilor Rizzo.
Hey, Mark, I just wanted to ask, where would the fireworks be fired from?
The dance is being held at a church over off of a button, kind of right behind Gemstone Palace.
Okay.
Not a heavily dense residential. There's some residential in that area, but not a whole lot.
Have you reached out to Chief Taylor just to be on standby to have someone available? I know when we do our fireworks shows, we have to have fire department standby. Have we reached out to them just to... Chief Taylor's great to work with.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if we could get someone standing by there, that, just safety, we're still kind of in a drought. Just to have that, a little oversight would be great, and I'm pretty sure they would want to help out, especially because it's for a great cause.
I'm right there with you. That was my first thought and my first concern, and he was my first contact.
Great. That's awesome. Great. Thanks for taking care of that. All right. Let's see if I can talk.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. You want to say something?
Yeah. So, I think it's a great idea. The fireworks have kind of been annoying to some residents because of the loud noise that they make. I know this is a short program, but if we did say yes to this, which it is for a great reason, how would we say no to the next group, like another Boy Scout group or other nonprofit that wants to do a display as well? So, I'm just having a little bit of a contemplating that part of it. I'd like to hear what council members would say about that.
That was my concern as well, frankly.
Because, you know, I don't like to say to some groups yes, and then another group no. So, what are we going to do moving forward once we set the precedent to allow fireworks in our city, which, you know, there was a lot of upset residents over New Year's Eve that I heard from because people were being insensitive and popping them off. And these things have gotten a lot louder, and let's be honest, they're not like they were a few years ago. Now, they're very loud, and they create a lot of trash. Not saying that I would say no, I just wanted to know, what are we going to do for the next group?
I was going to say, I think that's a policy question that we need to consider. So, I'm in support of this as well, but the reality is, number one, could aggravate some neighbors, but then probably more likely is it will give other organizations the same idea. There are quite a few. You know, VFW wants to do fireworks or various other groups. We've had proposals in the past for similar things, but never quite so formal and well put together as this, plus the extra benefit of the sponsorship, I think, makes this one unique. So, I would just say we should probably come up with some kind of threshold. If we're going to do this, it needs to have some level of community importance or significance. And Buta Brightside is a fantastic partner, and I don't know how you say no down the road, but it is a warning shot, you know, a warning that, you know, Councilmember Zuniga is bringing up, that there could be situations where council members get lobbied for going outside of the rules to allow for fireworks. Somebody wants to do it for birthday party, for example, or just, you know, those kind of things. Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I want to say thank you for asking. That's the important thing. If somebody wants, if a group wants to come forward, make sure they come and ask because right now, we have someone in Stagecoach Crossing popping fireworks whenever he wants, just out of the blue, will pop three or four fireworks off, big ones, and he's not asking. I'm telling you right now. Unfortunately, it's hard to catch people doing this because they do it in a time where they, you know, they do it in their run, right? Pretty much what it's going on. But I think what we do is just make sure we look at it case by case, set some kind of policy going forward, and making sure we're also informing the residents in the area so that way they have a heads up. So, if we could put that on our city communication, it's important as well, making sure everybody has a heads up. So, that would be important for me. But I think the biggest thing is if you're a group, you want to do something, we'll get some guidelines, but ask, it's important.
Yes. Councilor Harris.
I have the same concerns about multiple groups asking to do fireworks displays within the city. I think that's a bad precedent to set. I think it's dangerous. It's a danger to the homes in the area. As much as I'd love to support all the nonprofits that would like to do that, I think that it sets a dangerous precedent.
Mayor, I just would like to say that fireworks are probably top five least favorite things for me, and this is probably a one-time deal. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 24.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item 24. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Tobias.
One last thought on it. It is in my area, and I did have residents reach out. They are nervous. I just want to make sure that we have contacted the businesses nearby, correct? Are they good with this display going off near their businesses? Is that where this location is going to be at?
I don't know how far the radius is of how far that they've been contacted.
Okay.
But I know several in the area have been contacted.
Okay. And the fire chief has been notified.
Yes.
And again, thank you for approaching us for the permission because, again, it's one thing for people to go off and just do it on their own, but, you know, this is actually brought forward to where it's actually planned, and, you know, a strategic plan's been placed. Of course, we'll be notifying cop, fire, cop police about it, you know, if they see something go off on that end. But I do have other reservations on that because, you know, these are artillery shells that'll go off. They got to land somewhere. So, but with this here, I understand where they're coming from. I know who Buta Brightside and their organization is, and it does set a precedence, but then again, we'll take it case by case moving forward, and then we'll just have to review it and so forth. So...
Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, I'd just like to get clarification from Amy if we have the authority to waive an illegal event in the city limits, just to be on the safe side.
The ordinance provides that unpermitted fireworks displays are not allowed. There is a process by which displays can be permitted, and this is a way to do it.
So, I'd say yes.
Another example that comes to mind was from many years ago, there was a death at a school, and they wanted to have some kind of ceremony where they release balloons, and balloon releasing is technically an illegal activity. And so, they made a request similar, and I can't remember exactly how it all worked out, but we are a body that can make those decisions case by case, and maybe this is a time where we get to see how it works and see what the feedback is and whether it's something we want to do again. So, hopefully, Buta Brightside understands the, you know, what we're getting into and, you know, takes every precaution that they can to do it in a respectful way. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, reluctantly, but I think it sets a bad precedent.
Motion carries six to one. All right. Next up is Agenda Item 24, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the Board of Adjustment', Appointment, Terms, and Vacancies. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is being brought before you in regards to our Board of Adjustment. They're currently appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. Our current Board of Adjustment has been appointed since 2016, 2021, and we actually had some alternates added in 2024. Thank you. And we're just looking to see if we can align really how our Board of Adjustment is appointed with, align with our other boards and commissions in that process.
Yeah, I'll just jump on that. I wasn't even really aware. It's been so long since we've looked at the process, but I wouldn't, didn't feel comfortable with having that particular process differentiated from, as compared to the rest of the boards and commissions' policies. And I think what we're doing now is working, so I would like to fold Board of Adjustment into it for various reasons. It didn't get folded in, so unless somebody has a reason to keep it as is, I'd like to have it be the nominate and confirm through the committee rotation that we have. We just have to make that vote. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to amend the Board of Adjustment', Appointment, Terms, and Vacancies' policy to align with the overall boards and commissions' policy. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Next up is Agenda Item 22, receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding strategy for aesthetic design elements for roundabouts within the city roadways. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm hoping the presentation will come up for this one, but essentially, Ann is back with us from Coleman and Associates. They are the ones that are helping us with our roundabouts. We're really going to link the roundabouts and design elements for that with the accumulation and coming in on our roadways. So, tonight, we really kind of wanted to feature some ideas that we have for the roundabouts, looking at each roundabout, really kind of having an element of art signage and/or landscaping with that, and kind of a plan to see where we can go for that. And thanks. So, the plan would really be with this first phase of roundabouts that we have coming online. Perfect. We can go to the next slide if that'll work. Great. Thank you. So, really, we have a lot of roundabouts coming in with a lot of road bond projects. So, we're really kind of breaking them down into four different phases and grouping them with the design and build of the project. So, really, 1 through 12 kind of coming along Kohler's, and then East Kohler's hooking up with BBR, kind of the first phase of roundabouts that are coming online, and really looking at focusing potentially on planning strategies with some landscaping, art, and environmental graphics, signage and branding, and then evolving kind of our Kyle brand with that, with these roundabouts, and really going back to potentially our Arts and Cultural Board to receive some feedback on it, as well as potentially the Parks Board, if you so align. These are some roundabouts that the Coleman Group helped pull together, kind of highlighting some planning strategies that we could incorporate into the roundabouts for this. And then with that, you know, really kind of looking at a strong planting design, looking at using some local stone to create some vertical change in interest, of course, looking at importance of seasonal and color, and then introducing some drought tolerance and some potential rocks and different things to reduce irrigation and maintenance as well. So, if we had a roundabout that was really looking at some of the art and environmental graphics, you know, these are some elements that could be incorporated in those. And again, every roundabout would have kind of its own theme. Not all roundabouts would have the same theme. You wouldn't have like three art on the same roadway, but you could intersperse throughout the community, and that, this would give us the ability to look with the Arts and Cultural Board, connect with local artists, highlight special interests in our community, and have some personality really within our roundabouts. And then signage and branding is another element that we were looking at creating in some of the roundabouts as well. These are some examples of that, and they can add their kind of own focal point into these. And we do have some great signage already, but kind of taking our current signage maybe to the next level and evolving that, which I think Coleman has helped with some of our original signage ideas and elements that we've had within the city already. So, with that, we're hoping to kind of do this next level of stakeholder engagement. Staff has met with Coleman and kind of talked about where these roundabouts are located, you know, some elements and dispersing of some ideas, but really kind of taking it to the next level with the Arts and Cultural Board, potentially the Parks Board, and additional staff, and getting some feedback on these first phases of design. Again, kind of breaking these roundabouts up into quarters, understanding that, you know, the landscape and preparation of this artwork will need to align with kind of the opening of the roadways and understanding kind of the timelines will be done for that. We're hoping to do kind of the design now in this year of 2025, first part of 2026 on those design elements and incorporating that into, incorporating that into the actual opening of the roadway. So, Phase 1 somehow missed, but it's really 1 through 12, kind of concentrating on Kohler's Crossing here, and then those elements. And it's a little hard to see from this map, but the little S's and L's kind of represent signage, landscaping, art. Those would kind of be the focal points potentially of those roundabouts. And then we would actually come back to you and council. We're looking at April of this year to kind of show the types of elements to be located in these first 12 roundabouts. Phase 2 would kind of continue, roundabouts 18 through 22 in the second, third quarter later, the part of this year. And then we would continue with Phase 3 and Phase 4. So, we're really hoping to get some feedback, what you like, don't like about kind of the roundabout strategy. Ann's here to provide any additional guidance that we have, but we really hope to get feedbacks from some of our boards and commissions to look at those first 12 and then bring that back to you in April to discuss.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Ann, do you have anything you want to add? Tell us about the idea we have and whether it's a good one, and how do you see bringing all these roundabouts into a unified landscaping code as being valuable?
It's very valuable for orientation in a city. You know, these are markers that people can depend on to kind of give you a sense of place of where you are, like Melissa said. It's important to have individuality in your roundabouts, but it's also important to have some linking thread, whether it's stone type, masonry... some linking thread, whether it's stone type, masonry type. So there is some continuity, so they all hold together, so they're not piecemeal. So I think that's the real challenge and something we're really up for, and I think we do well. You know, we mentioned environmental graphics. You saw the state Capitol, we had the animals. The interesting fact with that is art was not allowed on the mall. And so when we had those fabricated, the question was, how did you, how did you create these without being allowed by art? And I said, well, they were really there to complete the story, supporting the flora and fauna of Texas, as was indicated throughout the entire project. So similarly, that, those sculptures, those pieces supported the story that we were trying to create, the linear processional of that campus mall. So similar to this, we want to have something that really holds it all together, tells the story of Kyle, but at the same time, as I mentioned, people will rely on these to know where they are in the city. It'll be the indicators, it'll be the markers. We don't want to do too much of one thing, not too much of one art, too much of environmental graphics, but we want to make sure it's real balanced throughout the city. And then we mentioned the, the family of wayfinding. So what we've got right now in Kyle's, we have some great signage, but we don't have as a lot of indicators like turning elements or street names coming up, you know, indicators that can be a family of environmental graphics that again, support the whole, the whole placemaking that these roundabouts can provide. And I want to say, because I've got the microphone.
Go ahead.
That I've mentioned before that we really are still grateful for the work that we were able to do for y'all, with y'all on the park across the street, the Mary-Kale Hartson Park, which won an award for the Texas Society of Landscape Architects last year. And for me personally, it's had the most impact because it was just such a joy to see the transformation, the way it's being loved and used. And my son lives down the street from there, so that's even more special because my grandchild uses the playground. Thank you.
Well, I'm trying to look up. You'd be happy to know, Ann, that we are getting ready to receive another award for Mary-Kale Hartson, but I can't remember what it's called. Does anybody know the name of that award?
Best award ever, I'm sure.
Traps, the Traps Award.
Oh, good.
I don't know what that is exactly, but.
Lone Star Legacy Award.
Lone Star Legacy Award. You know, the park has to be over 50 years old, I think, in order even to qualify, and so it's pretty exciting. So it, that, that project continues to win awards. So I'm glad to see that, you know, we're continuing to have that conversation because I do think a common theme in telling a story through these roundabouts will be very important to establishing them as a vital part of Kyle infrastructure, but more than just infrastructure. So does anybody have any questions for Melissa or Ann? Councilmember Harris?
A couple. One of the things that I'd like to consider when we're going through this is how distracting the roundabout is. When you're driving, you do not need to be looking at whatever's there, but to see it and recognize it is, is different. So there's, there's a very delicate balance there. And then the other is lighting. If you could go back to the first, like maybe the second slide in the whole deck. This is an example of what I would hope not to see. It's non-compliant lighting, it's uplit. So you're seeing, obviously, you're seeing from looking down, a very, very bright light. And that's not code, nor is the lighting for the, whatever's in the tree or sculpture or whatever's in the middle. So that would not be code compliant. I would like to see all of our lighting to be code compliant. And the one at the, you showed the slide of the one at Marketplace in Burleson. And if you want to go to that one.
It was an old picture.
Our current one?
It's still there, though. That one.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's an old picture.
Yeah, that's an old picture, but the lighting's still there. The lighting is uplit so that you see it from the other side of the intersection. It's right in your eyes. So we need all lighting to be downlit on these roundabouts so that it is not, so that it's dark sky compliant, number one, but also that it is not blinding you when you come into the intersection. This is especially critical for people my age because our, our pupils do not adjust as fast. I don't care if you have had surgery to replace the lenses, the pupils still don't adjust as fast. And I can easily be blinded coming into intersections. So I would really like for lighting to be a very, very strategic, very dark sky compliant and be part of our analysis and design in the roundabout.
Additional comments? Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, Brian, yeah, I just want to touch on the lighting a little bit more, too. Making sure we are bringing lighting to all the roundabouts. We know it's a safety issue, it's something that has to be done. When I first talked about it, I was kind of dead set about lighting it because of the cost, but then I found out that it's a safety issue if not people run through them. So making sure we do light them up. The other thing is going to be about the pedestrian walkways. If we, if we're designing roundabouts, are we going to be designing the raised pedestrian walkways near it to make sure we have safety as well? Because I think they go hand in hand, so we should be looking at that as well with these designs.
Yeah, we'll be glad to incorporate those. They all do have pedestrian access, or most of them do, and we'll make sure that each of those, each of the roundabouts has power and water that will be available to the site. And so we'll be working with Coleman and Associates to look at how best to design those, and we'll bring you back the options that show those elements, but those are standard elements that are included.
Oh, sounds good. Thanks, Brian.
One thing I wanted to add on, which was to the question of like where you look when you come into a, a roundabout, and I think oftentimes people have this idea that they want to keep the roundabouts flat so that they can see straight across. But the, the reality is, every design engineer will say that that's the wrong way to design the interior of a roundabout, that you actually want something meaty there so that you're not looking through. You don't look to the right, you don't look straight. All you do is look at the left, decide oncoming traffic. So on that point, I think that designing something more robust in the middle, in the middle makes a lot of sense. But, you know, roundabouts aren't things that you're supposed to walk up and look at individual little details. You're not looking and reading plaques. You don't want people congregating in the middle of that. So the design still needs to be something where you get a real sense of what it is very easily as you're coming up. It just kind of is part of the landscape that you're seeing. And so how you, how you walk that balance is, you know what the professionals are for, but I do think that those are all elements that we need to have, which is to say, robust landscaping and artistic design that allows for there to be something substantial there so that you're not seeing the cars coming that aren't even near you coming the other direction, but rather naturally looking to the left, but then also not so complicated in its artistic elements that people might want to spend too much time looking at it and in particular, walking up to it and trying to see it up close, which is just difference between like Mary-Kale Hartson, for example, because those have, there's artistic elements there where you want to come up and spend time, you know, really looking at the details. So those are just sort of my feedback points as we're, as we're embarking on this process. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add?
Councilmember Sunega.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm looking at Phase Four, and I guess that would be the summation of 27 roundabouts. Is that going to be the final number?
Roundabouts?
I, I will say, it seems like that, that number does evolve as, as new roadways come online, and, and we've asked Coleman to kind of help us link these projects in as, as we design new roads and new roadways come online, so.
So we might have a 27 and finishing it out in Phase Four?
I, I think right now there's 27. I don't know if this does every single.
So my concern is like, that's a lot of roundabouts, and there will be a fiscal impact to do all of this art and signage, which I think it's great to do. But if, if we keep building with more roundabouts, are we doing those in the future as well? Like to, now they all have to sort of match?
Yep.
You can't leave one now, guess that didn't get done the right way, but you got signature ones everywhere else. So what are we going to do to continue that theme of making sure that all the roundabouts get, get some attention?
Well, the first thing I, I would tell you is, these are the ones that we know about. There's a lot, like as you mentioned, 27. We've established a funding stream in the budget to provide funding to improve the roundabouts and to work on the design for each of those. And so that's meant to be a recurring stream is until we finish all of these. But I suspect there'll be more. Over the next few years, there'll be more that are, as we look at other intersections and the city continues to grow, there's going to be more intersections that'll be added. I think what we're looking for with Coleman and Associates is to have a blueprint for how these interact, how they work, how they function in all of the different environments that we have and to connect them. I think, I like the term, a thread of a connection that you'd have between all of them, so we have a branding that's put together. But that's really the design of this, to get started with it. Time is of the essence because we do believe several of these will be under construction in the very near future, and we want to make sure we have construction documents for that first set. But the point's well taken. We need to make sure that we have a good set of guidelines moving forward, but we do have funding identified for that moving forward.
Yeah, that's, that slide right before Phase One, before you get right into it, it's like you have, you have them very strategically in almost every good section. She just seems like you'd be missing some to the southwest and southeast. And if you got a couple there, I would be good with that's it because that's not having to do anymore after that. But there are some missing to really capture the, the entire, shoot. Wish I was more of a person that could speak. So to capture the disperse of all of these roundabouts, it's like you almost have them there, but there are some missing on the southwest and southeast as far as the pivotal, the pivotal ones.
Well, these are the ones that have been identified. I guess what I would tell you and the council is if there are others that you'd like to look at, we can certainly consider those in the budget process, and we can look at other intersections. These are the ones that are moving forward.
I really like these, and if we had a few more southwest, southeast, I think we could call it that we're done with more in the future because we could get to a point of having to add, if we're doing all of them, up to 40 roundabouts by the time we're built out. I, I don't know. I'm just saying that if, something to consider, if we have to do every roundabout in the city, that we have, we have a good representation of them right there.
I, I feel confident there will be more in the future as the city grows. I can't say which ones, but it's something we'll have to continue to look at in the budget process.
Brian, what do you need from us tonight?
I, I think what we're looking for is any observations you had, some of the feedback that we got about some of the elements that you want to include in the design process. That's one thing that we were looking for. And then secondly, we wanted to make sure you were comfortable with the process and the timing of coming back to you. Really, what we wanted to do is make sure you knew we were out there talking to some of these boards, visiting with the community, and as we bring that information back that you were informed and you knew, we knew kind of what you were looking for. So that's the general direction we need. If we're heading in the right direction, then we'll see you back in two or three months, and we'll have some, some options for you to consider and costs. Each of, there's different ways to do this, and we can kind of show you a little bit more specifically about what that might look like.
If I may, I want to add something that may help. You know, none of this was designed at all. It was all strategies that, that describe and that other places have done. Very few of them were, except for the ones that were obviously yours. I'm glad you brought up lighting, too, because that is something that can take the place of, of water or even sculpture sometimes, if lighting is subtly done and is definitely compliant with dark sky. But more importantly, we can have a hierarchy of solutions. Some of them can be very simple landscape solutions because like you said, you don't want busyness everywhere. So I think that helps with your budget, too. So you may have in a certain district, some simple ones, some with art, some with wayfinding. You want to link them all together so they create a sense of place, but that's going to help moderate the cost and average them throughout all of the wayfinding. So we're looking forward to bringing those kind of strategies to you, to help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I just want to mention that we've applied for Tree City USA, and the roundabouts could be an important part of our recognition of the importance of trees in our community.
I think some trees in a roundabout make perfect sense.
Yeah.
So, and just to reiterate, I mean, it's, it's natural if you, if you think about, your, your point on the lights is similar to the point. We're actually, I think we're making the same point because if you, if you're driving up and you see lights shining at you, you don't know what that is necessarily, and it can cause disorientation and confusion. Same as the lights of vehicles coming, so you may think it's straight if you're, especially initially, when folks don't know how to, you know, acclimate to a roundabout. That's why, you know, there's some good examples that are out there of roundabouts that are actually pretty well hauled off, like you cannot see directly through. And that's, that's actually an aesthetic that is engineered to make them safer and more effective.
I find that helpful.
It, it can be. So it's like you were telling me about the, you know, the, the neck situation, you know, that's where the, a roundabout can, you, you pull in and it's just right there. That's all you have to do is look and see if someone's coming, and then you just proceed. It's simple.
That's one of the things about roundabouts is that they're so much safer, especially for older people because we have so much trouble looking over our shoulders. I can, but a lot of people my age can't. So when you've got intersections that you've got two lanes go straight, maybe one turns left, and you've got a right turn lane that's completely cantilevered, like at 1626 and Kohler's Crossing, you can't see. An older person can, plus we've got a restrictive field of vision. You cannot see to make that turn. So when I get up to that intersection, I always square off, but most, almost nobody does.
We're getting off topic, Mayor.
Yes.
Can we move on, please?
All right, anyone else? All right, we're going to move on. Thank you, Melissa.
He started it.
Who? All right, next up, Agenda Item 23, last item. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding the Playground Steeplechase Park.
Steeplechase Playground is a project we're really excited about. This is a replacement of an existing playground. So we're going to go over the purpose and strategy for this project, some general playground standard information, site conditions, engagement strategies, and some proposed options, really taking some feedback and direction from you all. So staff assessed the playgrounds of all the playgrounds within the city and determined what needed to be replaced. We look at age, we look at conditions, we look at any repairs that we've made that have been documented. And Steeplechase Park is, we'll expound on later in the presentation, was in, is in, it's, it's probably our highest level, or really our lowest rated playground in need of replacement. Staff engaged with Whirlix Design, who is the, who is the sales rep for LSI Playgrounds. It's a very reputable, reputable playground company with American-made products. And they worked with the vendors to provide three concepts for, that'll ultimately go for park board and community input and council input. And with these designs, staff had factored in national standards for safety, for liability. Also, we looked at the Pro's Master Plan, some of the preliminary feedback we received, and we saw that the community by and large wants shade, and they want consistent surfacing like poured in place or even, even turf. And so factoring in those, what we're going to call necessary design standards, we challenged this company to come up with three concepts that we would ultimately bring to park board for some feedback, telling us what they like, what they don't like about it, what they would like to see in addition. And then tonight, we're bringing it to you all for similar feedback. And ultimately, we want to bring, put these three concepts out to the community for a vote and which one that they like best, and also provide maybe another option, provide any additional feedback and needs that they may have. And also, we would like to have a, maybe like a town hall meeting that's on site at Steeplechase Park. And at this time, I'd like to ask our very talented Parks Planning and Projects Manager, Will Atkinsen, to go over some general playground standard information.
Thank you. So the cool thing about playgrounds is pretty much everybody can use them, and they're just a lot of fun. But when we're incorporating all these items with playgrounds, we have to include physical, social, cognitive skills within the environment. But they also are designed to manage risk. We don't want to eliminate it. We want kids climbing all over the playgrounds, going down the slides and all that, but they need to be safe at the same time. So the three criteria for that is making sure that the risk is age appropriate and manageable, that they are following established ADA guidelines and servicing requirements to minimize the fall impact because kids will fall, scrape their knees, what have you. And also mandate that we have signage on site, so it's the intended age groups and proper use are properly followed. The average lifecycle for a playground's about 10 to 15 years, but that also depends on use and manufacturer and what have you. Just, there we go. All right, three things to keep in mind. Most of our playgrounds right now have engineered wood fiber. It is ADA compliant, but it is not the best option for accessibility on sites. So what we're starting to see more and more now is the route to take is either to have pour-in-place, which is PIP, or synthetic turf playground grass. And engineered wood fiber has an annual replenishment requirement. PIP is five to seven years, and then turf is 10 to 15 years. So when we looked at the park, we went out there and took, took a look around. We even looked on near map and Google Earth to see when the site was. We even looked on, uh, near map and, uh, Google Earth to see when the site was, the site was even installed in the first place. Um, it has, um, a two to five and a five to 12 year play area incorporated with it with a shade structure, uh, engineered wood fiber. This structure is 20 plus years old with a shade installation from somewhere in the vicinity of 2014 to 2016. Uh, it just, it's very faded. The paint job on it is falling, is, is rusting out, has low play value, limited inclusive, inclusivity components. ADA entrance ramp is starting to warp. Like it's hard to get in there if you're in a wheelchair. Limited sidewalk connections, it's just, it's very outdated, so it needs to be replaced. Some pictures of the examples there. So when we are looking at all these items, we don't want to provide exclusion where no, for, where some people can't use it, uh, but we want to take it all the way to inclusion where everything's interspersed equally through there for various components. So we want a, a kid who's either in a wheelchair or a kid who's not, then they all, they can all play together as much as possible throughout the entire site. That is the goal. So, uh, from both the physical, cognitive, uh, simulation and what have you, um, so we're going to have new sidewalks, new shade, uh, new parking lot improvements, which is on a different contract that y'all approved in January and, um, it's, this is going to be a great park. We're excited about this. So from a summary perspective, uh, all three concepts incorporate, uh, inclusive amenities, synthetic grass and pour in place surfacing, uh, mix of both is appropriate, calming tunnel mound, uh, use of existing shade in addition of shade for the swings and improvement to accessibility for the area. So the three concepts, we have the first one is, which is themed, concept two is traditional and concept three is modern abstract. So here's a picture of, um, concept number one. You have a mix of different items on there, a couple of slides, swings, um, just, just cognitive play areas. It's, it's fantastic. So we show it with the shade and we show it without, so you can see that a little bit better. Um, this cost, uh, build out is, um, at a max of about $472,000 for the installation of this, of the playground, plus the design and site work for the sidewalk seat walls, the engineering of it for 175,000. And this is their Volo model. Concept two is more of a traditional play structure. You have a, of course, a shade structure as well, um, and what have you. This one's going to be around 454,000 plus again, the 175,000 and as they call it their venti. Concept three is modern abstract. I liken the, this one to more like an Apollo space program or something along those lines. Very space age, kind of neat. If I was, all of these are cool, by the way, but if I was a kid, if I was several years younger than what I am now, I'd probably want to play on this one the best. This one is, uh, to the tune of 514,000 plus 175,000 dollars for design and construction. That's called the Hydra, very geometric and what have you. So we took all these three designs to park board on January 13th and they provided and supported options, uh, back to staff. They liked all of them, um, but they want to make sure that they, we absolutely include inclusive components, different types of swings, if possible, zip lines, um, that is not quite in the budget, that aspect of it, but, um, but spinning hardware for sure, like either a merry-go-round or so. We already have a lot of spinning stuff around in different parts, but including that kind of stuff. But they also wanted to make sure we have seating areas or exercise areas incorporated right around the playground for adults. I mean, kids are going there, so are their parents. And, uh, they want pour in place in key wear area zones with synthetic turf everywhere else. So that way we can just pop out the synthetic chunk of it if we need to replace it, um, very easily in those key areas. So, and now we have the timeline. So you want to keep going? I can keep going? All right, cool. Um, so January 13th, park board, we're here with you all tonight. Uh, then we're going to start the public engagement stage in February to March with a handful of surveys and a couple of public meetings. And then in April and May, we're going to start incorporating that feedback, uh, back into the design and bringing reports back to y'all and then, and, um, execute a final, uh, contract with Wurlx to, um, with y'all's direction, of course. And installation and equipment lead time will get us to the August, September timeframe for a reopening.
Customer Rizzo.
Yeah, just want to say a great presentation. Thank you, Will. Uh, I like concept three, actually, but one of the things I do want to do is a synthetic turf. The pour in, the PIP is important in the middle and important, and the reason why, because it's an inclusive park, making sure every kid can take advantage of this. Uh, so kids with mobility challenges, anything is really, really important. Cover is going to be a must. We got to cover these up, especially here in central Texas with the heat. So I, I do want to thank staff for these concepts are really great. Uh, it looks like y'all really, uh, did y'all's homework on these and brought a couple of amazing concepts and, uh, just want to thank y'all for that. But the other thing I want to talk about is the old equipment that we're taking out. It, you know, there's, there's some areas in our town that we don't have parks nearby. I think kids should always have a four minute walk, five minute, the most a 10 minute walk to a park. And there's some, uh, pieces of land that we've looked at, uh, over by Chop Up. There's a, uh, a multifamily, uh, area there where we own some, a little lot there. To see us be able to put something temporarily there just for the kids in that area would be important. So there's anything we can salvage out of our equipment that would be great. I'd love to see us do some pop-up areas so every kid has an opportunity to have a park, right? So I think our staff could, uh, paint that, make it look a little better. Uh, this park is a really large park, so it's needs a, a big upgrade and I really love the concepts, but anywhere we can add a, uh, build a park, a temporary park would be important. I don't know what the steps for that would be, but it's something I would love to see happening in, uh, any areas where we own some land that we don't have a park nearby. But other than that, it, it's kind of what my feedback would be. And then, uh, shade, lighting, make sure we have, but the benches as well, making sure we're building to withstand the heat. There's the new synthetics now that woods that are out there that don't absorb heat so people can sit on them even in the middle of summer. So making sure we're, uh, thinking of everything that we could think of to make sure people can enjoy in, in these parks. And that's pretty much it there.
Yep.
And with that, like to make, um, what do you need? Just, uh, direction is all you need, right?
No, 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 hold on.
Hold on, Rizzo.
Mayor Proten. Take a break.
Okay. Uh, if we've identified that there are safety hazards at this park, why are we waiting six months to go through this entire process to replace the safety hazards?
We, we're addressing safety hazards. We're just, I mean, we consider this, uh, something that needs to be replaced so we don't get further behind the eight ball. And so we also want to take the necessary steps to make sure that we're getting the right playground that meets all the requirements the community needs.
Is there any time that could be cut out of this timeline?
We could shorten the time for surveys possibly. We, we wanted to leave for public survey for a month.
A small park. It is, it feels like we, we've-
Yeah, we've actually, uh, with using the playground manufacturer, we've had some time on design because we're able to do in-house design for, for all the products and, and placecapes and significant cost savings. So with all the design costs that we save going this route, we're able to put all of that play value back into the playground.
I'd just like to see some time cut out of this timeline because that's, we're waiting, we're going through an entire summer with a outdated park.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much public engagement is needed when we have the Parks Board engaged already, you know? So, so I, I understand the public engagement is good, but when it comes to, we're kind of just sitting around waiting to say yes to a plan, then I'm not sure that we're actually helping anyone. And I think the folks who use it would like to see it faster as well. So customer Harris.
A couple of things, uh, similar to what Councilmember Rizzo had to say. I think the shade, we need to consider making those shade structures strategic. That's hard to say. Say, stay. Strategic shade structures. Because sometimes we put up the structures where they shade at noon, but then in the afternoons, when the kids are really going to be there most of the time, the shade is gone, uh, off of the play equipment. So it, it, we need to be sure that the west side is getting shaded, uh, south and west sides are getting shaded and that we do have seating area for parents and picnics there, right there by the play area. And for the surface, I really think we need to be looking at some of the materials that have, um, less heat index on them. There are some that are cooler. I know there's turf that's cooler than other turfs. Um, I don't know about the poured in place, but it would be great because those get super hot, turf gets super hot. But I do know for turf, uh, it may not be quite as long lasting as some of the other turfs, but I think it would be a good investment in our parks for kids.
Well, I think the PIP would be the best way to put in place and keep in mind, you're going to have a shade cover over it, a large one, so you won't get the, uh, the red heat on it.
Well, I, I just want to say similar to what has been, what I was saying when we were talking about using artificial turf in our landscaping ordinance, that my, you know, artificial turf gets very, very hot. So if we're going to have it, I think the majority of it needs to be shaded.
Oh, yeah.
So is, if that, is that the plan or is it where we're going to have a lot of that turf just sitting there baking in the sun?
No, our plan is for the artificial turf, even if we go hybrid PIP and turf is for the turf being the shade.
I think it would be good for us to go and find some examples to go and it's the, you just, you, you think philosophically or, you know, theoretically about it until you go and put your feet, your bare feet on something, uh, then you get to find out. And artificial turf in Texas, I've never stepped, I've never seen artificial turf that could withstand the Texas sun and not be at least 20 to 30 degrees higher than whatever the natural temperature is. And when it's 104 outside, that's, makes it impossible to play. So that's just my word of caution on that turf is to make sure that we're considering the temperature as well as the durability of the surface.
Same with PIP, right?
And, and if you want an example, it's in a park next door. So we have, uh, the PIP and the turf.
Right, but that's what, I mean, we dismissed the initial, the initial proposal, which is probably the coolest of the three. So everything has a trade-off is my point.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I think we need to make sure we're valuing the temperature of that surface because you don't want to go and install it and then wait and all of a sudden the Texas summer comes and y'all go out there and you realize that it's so hot, it's actually burning the kids.
20 degrees right there.
Yes, sir. Get the proper infill material. That's primarily what causes the heat. If you get the black, uh, rubber infill material that you typically see on sports fields, that's tends to retain a lot of energy. Um, and then with, with the type of, uh, grass fabric that we would use, it's important that we use the antimicrobial and, uh, anti-static for the cochlear ear implants.
Quick question.
Customer Zuniga.
Yeah, are you going to increase the footprint of this park or is it going to stay the same size out there?
It's primarily going to stay the same. We might have to expand in some areas to accommodate seating and maybe an additional feature, but primarily we're looking at the same footprint.
I do agree with like it needing, if it could fit in there, like more zipline, more swing, more things that turn, not really the weight stuff, but, um, I think that this is a good concept, but it could still be better. So I want to make sure that we're not just settling with this, that we can really enhance this park in some way.
We looked at, um, some of the fall zones for, you know, that's, that's important to, uh, for the swings, for instance, have a larger fall zone. So there is some trade-off. We, we're trying to maximize, um, the all abilities features as much as we can and, and taking input. So we can look at something like a zipline, it'll increase the, the budget, but if we can find a zipline reasonably within budget and, and it won't impact the fall zones of some of the other features and maybe require us to remove things, um, we, we'll evaluate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it, it needs to be something that all the kids will enjoy for, you know, throughout and, uh, if, it's got to be different than, I guess, than what we're replacing and come back better.
Yes, sir.
Better than the splash pad, huh?
Well, the splash pad was also, was also, was also good.
A lot better.
It was a good feature.
Well, it was a good feature, it was just poorly designed and poorly funded.
It was underfunded.
Customer Rizzo.
All right, um, uh, any other direction, any emotion from us or what do you need, Brian?
I have one question.
I think, I, we don't really need a motion. I mean, it was just general direction, but if, if, uh, the council's comfortable with the overall plan, we'll see what we can do to shorten up the schedule a little bit, get some feedback and come back quickly and try to, uh, add some of the other features that have been discussed this evening. And, uh, we want to make sure you were aware of it and, and supportive.
Yeah, and I know that we're taking in, um, in account also the different age groups and stuff like that, but yeah, I'm in full support of expanding this park, making it bigger, making it a beautiful park, uh, giving those residents a sense of pride, so it's to our best.
Yep, it's my area. It's my district. Uh, it's a long time coming, uh, especially taking my kids out there when they're little. Uh, so I'm excited to, uh, see what we can do. Everybody had perfect points, shade, uh, expanding it out. Um, I think any kind of improvements out there would be, uh, appreciated. And number two, when it comes to the engagement, unfortunately, Steeplechase does not have an HOA, so you can't really reach out to them and say, hey, look, this is what's coming in your neighborhood. Here's the survey and so forth on that end. So, uh, it's going to be real interesting to see, uh, where the, uh, the Parks Board, uh, takes it from there. And, and I know, uh, city council loves to slam the negativity on the splash pad, uh, constantly, but, uh, I drive out there and I see a lot of families out there and they're enjoying it. So, um, just my two cents on that.
Customer Harris.
Have we done a count at the park to see how many kids are on that play area at any given time?
We don't have a formal count.
That would be really good to know, um, because we want to build to cap, you know, to what might be capacity. And if we enhance the features, we'll have, probably have more kids coming, especially with the disability aspects. Um, so it would be very nice to have somebody go out a few weekends and see how many kids are playing.